Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the roll?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz. If he is not here tonight, is that right, Patrick?
That's correct. He gave prior notice that he would not be here this evening.
Commissioner Egenberger, here. Commissioner Foster.
Good evening.
Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zubor.
I am here, thank you. And I also want the record to reflect that we have Patrick Sloan and Aaron Schludo from the township here, and we have our consultant, Ms. Grusa is here. Thank you, Courtney Grusa is here. Thank you. If we have, would anyone like to make a motion about the agenda?
Madam Chair, move approval.
Support.
All right, we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Patrick, do we have communications outside of what you've already provided in the packet?
There's no additional communications outside of the comments that we've received for tonight's meeting. At the end of the meeting, I'll have some discussion about a potential upcoming joint meeting with the Township Board of Trustees. So I'll provide more information about that at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. All right. Very good. We have a public comment period where an individual may speak for a maximum of three minutes. If you are hoping to speak, please provide your name and address for the record. If you are planning to speak about one of the items on our agenda this evening, they are all public hearings that would be Everbrook rezoning, IMAC properties, and CESO rezoning, and SRB servicing LLC and Canton Oaks rezoning. If you're here to talk about any of those, please hold your comments until we get to the public hearing for those specific items. Does anyone have anything general to talk about this evening? All right, then we will move right into the public hearing section. Our first item on the agenda is item number 120-RZ-8508, the Everbrook rezoning. We're considering rezoning for parcels. There's several of them, I'm not going to read them all off. Several parcels on Geddes Road. These properties are located on the north side of Geddes Road between Barr and Denton Road. The proposed rezoning from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential. Patrick, please tell us all about it.
Sure, thank you. The purpose of the proposed application is to rezone three parcels on the north side of Geddes from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential. The subject area for these three parcels is about 1.58 acres, and they contain two single-family residences. And they're shown here on the screen. This is just the aerial map that we provide for general rezonings or any application. And so the three parcels, there's a group of two to the west, and then there's a single parcel on the east side. Both parcels are relatively small, or both sets of parcels are relatively small. And the proposal is to eventually combine them with adjacent properties for a proposed development that is called Everbrook that we'll talk a little bit about during the course of our rezoning review, as well as from the applicants themselves. For tonight, tonight's agenda item is only for the rezoning application for these three subject parcels. So the scope of the application for the rezoning is relatively narrow, but because they're in the context of a larger proposed development application, we want to take the opportunity to talk about how they fit within that proposed development application, as well as any comments about these sites in particular, and some of the offsite areas that will be within that development application. The parcels are located on the north side of Geddes, just east of Barr as illustrated on the map there. And they are just west of the entrance to Grandview Estates. So this boulevard at Geddes Road, that's Brookside. So these two sets of parcels are between Barr Road and Brookside. And when there's a proposed rezoning, we look at 10 criteria in the zoning ordinance in Section 27.06D4. There are 10 criteria that must be reviewed when a rezoning is considered. And when we look at rezonings, we do a staff analysis and a staff report that analyzes those 10 criteria. Based on the information that's submitted for the rezoning of these three parcels, we find that the 10 criteria are met. And we'll talk about those a little bit during our presentation here. Before getting into some of the standards for those 10 standards, I wanted to talk a little bit about the development application itself in terms of the larger context. So this layout plan is in the Planning Commission packet for this evening. And for this application, there's been a special land use application that's been filed by Pulte. And the proposed development is called Everbrook. And there are 514 proposed units that are active adult community units. All 514 units are proposed to be age-restricted, 55 and over. And there's currently a special land use application for this development that's under review by staff. However, the application and plans for that special land use are not yet complete enough to bring forward to the Planning Commission for review or for a public hearing of that particular application. So we're not ready to talk about the entire development application and some of the questions and concerns that there may be, but we're willing to hear them. What we wanted to show this for is to show the overall development context with the subject parcels. So if we zoom in a little bit more, those subject parcels are located around in the area where my cursor is, on the north side of Geddes Road between Brookside and Barr. So on those parcels themselves, there may be some units that are there. Most of it is proposed as open space and for some of the linear frontage along Geddes Road for both landscaping and stormwater storage. With regard to stormwater management, we do have a few comments in our staff report. And also, the applicant will have a presentation here in a little bit to give a presentation on the proposed rezoning, the proposed larger development as a whole, and an update on some of the items related to stormwater management on this site. Going back to the 10 criteria, in terms of the size of the site, the overall size is, again, about 1.58 acres. And the larger development site that's illustrated in the concept plan is about 230 and a half acres. So the actual proposal for the rezoning to R2, it represents less than 1% of the total land area of this development. The reason that we are here with this rezoning application is that all of the parcels that are illustrated on that development map, except for the subject parcels this evening, are already zoned R2 Single Family Residential. And for the applicant to apply for a special land use for an active adult community, for the 55 and older community that they're proposing on the plans, that use is not permitted in the current rural residential district, but it is a special land use in the R2 district. So the applicants have applied for the R2 zoning to make it consistent with the adjacent properties, as well as to make it eligible for that special land use application. The active adult community requirements, or I'll call them AAC requirements for short, those are in Section 6.03G of the zoning ordinance. And the special land use plan is currently under review by staff. In the AAC standards, it allows for greater than two units per acre in the R2 district. It allows up to four units per acre, subject to there being available sewer. And so staff is still reviewing the plans and analyzing sewer capacity to determine whether the density proposed by Pulte is attainable with that special land use application. So I know we're getting a little outside of the rezoning, but I did want to talk about density in the context of the application. The overall density proposed on the development application is 2.3 units per acre. So it's a little over the two units per acre in the base proposed R2 zoning district, but it's far less than the maximum allowed in the AAC areas. This concept development plan shows 41% open space, which is about 93 acres. Most of that is in existing natural areas, like around the creek, in floodplain areas, wetlands and woodlands, and along the ITC corridor. On this plan, there are three access points proposed. Two access points are on Geddes and one on Barr, allowing the traffic to be dispersed among the road systems. One of the access points on Geddes is directly across from Brookside, so it allows that intersection to align. The other access point along Geddes is much farther to the west, west of Barr Road. And then the third access point is off of Denton Road. So depending on where traffic is coming and going, drivers can take advantage of either what's the most convenient, or if there are traffic issues in certain areas, then they can, they have alternate routes in and out of the development. The conceptual development plan also shows a proposed layout for stormwater management, and that includes expansion of the regional basin located northeast of the site. So that basin, part of the basin is offsite, and it serves primarily the hamlets to the north and east. And there's room adjacent to the basin for expansion. So the applicants propose to expand the existing basin westward to accommodate more drainage. And on the site, there are three new basins within that development. The basins are proposed to outlet northward to Fowler Creek. Additionally, the concept plan proposes two relief culverts on the north side of Geddes between Barr and Denton Road, which would allow for drainage from the ditch on the north side of Geddes Road to go northward under the proposed sidewalk and into the proposed development north of Geddes Road. That's in an area that's classified as additional floodplain storage area. And additional comments regarding that will defer to the applicant and the Engineering Division. So for some of the criteria, the first criteria is will the proposed amendment be in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance? And the second criteria is if the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the township. The future land use map of the comprehensive plan designates the subject property as low-density residential, which recommends a density of two units per acre. The subject property has been classified as low-density residential on the future land use map since at least 2004. So rezoning the site to the R2 district is consistent with the master plan and the zoning ordinance. Adjacent to the site, the areas to the north, south, east, and west of the subject parcels are all zoned R2 Single Family Residential. So the rezoning would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the future land use map, as well as adjacent properties. Another criteria is have conditions changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted? There have been some change conditions in the area, mostly due to development demand. For example, in 2018, there were three non-adjacent parcels to the east located north of Geddes Road and west of Denton that were rezoned from RR to R2. So these parcels are part of the proposed special land use application, which will come later. So there is some recent precedent in the area for rezoning into the R2 district. So there are some conditions that have changed in terms of recent rezonings that have rezoned in accordance with a recommendation of the future land use map of the master plan. The fourth criteria is whether the amendment would correct an inequitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than grant special privileges. The proposed rezoning wouldn't grant special privileges because the rezoning is supported by the future land use map of the master plan, and it's the same as the adjacent R2 zoning district on the north, south, east, and west. The fifth criteria would be, will the amendment result in unlawful exclusionary zoning? This amendment doesn't result in any exclusionary zoning because it's a result of an application by the owners of the subject property, and they're adjacent to other R2 zoning. So there's nothing exclusionary about the proposed zoning. The sixth criteria is if the amendment would set an inappropriate precedent resulting in the need to correct a future planning mistake. The proposed amendment would not set an inappropriate precedent because it's consistent with the comprehensive plan policies and the future land use map, as well as consistent with other rezoning precedent in the area. The seventh criteria is if a rezoning is requested, is the proposed zoning consistent with existing land use of surrounding properties? And surrounding properties are predominantly single-family residential and rural residential. So the R2 district is adjacent to a lot of those areas and is consistent with that area. And going through these criteria, we're just looking at the rezoning criteria for the three subject parcels. These zoning criteria don't really speak to the larger development proposal. So staff's comments on the rezoning criteria and meeting the 10 criteria, the zoning ordinance, those are, as they relate to those three parcels. We do make some comments about the overall development plan, but really, these criteria address only those parcels that are subject to this application. The eighth criteria is that if a rezoning is requested, could all requirements of the proposed zoning classification be complied with on the subject parcels? Because these parcels are so small, there would still be some non-conformities based on how small the properties are, and there may be some setback non-conformities there. But to go from the RR district to the R2 district, the properties become more conforming because the setbacks are lower in the R2 district. In terms of the proposed AAC standards, the staff has done some review of the initial plans for the AAC development, and we're still in the plan review stages of that. So it's premature to make any affirmative findings on the special land use AAC application just because that's still being worked on. We've sent staff comments. This plan that's on the screen here may still yet be amended, so we can't really make any findings related to this particular development because it's still in the review phase. But if and when it gets to the Planning Commission for special land use review, we'll have findings at that time. The ninth criteria is if a rezoning is requested, is the proposed zoning consistent with trends in land development in the general vicinity? And this proposed rezoning is because the surrounding properties are zoned R2, including Grandview Estates, south of Geddes Road. So that's consistent with the adjacent zoning districts and land development. The 10th and final criteria is if a rezoning is requested, what is the impact on township infrastructure? First, with relation to water and sewer, the comprehensive plan recommends a density of two units per acre, and it recognizes a synchronous relationship between the township's sanitary sewer master plan and the comprehensive plan. So in the AA district or the AAC development, any density that's above two units per acre has to be justified by available capacity in the sewer system. That analysis will be done a little bit later during the development review process. And also, any kind of recommendations on the proposed rezoning are just related to the three subject parcels in the rezoning. Because this is a standard rezoning application, the developer can't offer conditions, and we can't ask for conditions because it's either a recommendation for approval or a recommendation of denial. So neither one of those recommendations should take into account the overall development application that's proposed in a separate special land use application. So any kind of findings on the sewer would be a little bit later in the development process. But in terms of capacity with two units per acre, the sewer plan contemplates the zoning being consistent with the future land use plan, which is two units per acre. The next part of the township infrastructure findings are roads. Geddes and Denton Road are both paved and both under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. There has been a traffic impact study that has been prepared by Fleas and Vanderbrink, and it's included in the Planning Commission packet this evening. The traffic study concludes that the study intersections are expected to operate acceptably at level of Service D or better during AM and PM peak periods, subject to installing an eastbound left-turn lane on Geddes Road at the West Drive entrance, west of Barr Road. Therefore, the traffic study does not recommend any additional mitigation measures, but the traffic study still has yet to be reviewed by Canton's traffic engineering consultant, as well as Wayne County. So there are some initial findings in the traffic study that show that the development is feasible, but we're still doing our analysis in light of the special land use application in that larger context beyond these three subject parcels. The next township infrastructure finding is related to natural features. The three subject parcels do not contain any floodplains or wetlands. The concept plan that's shown before you has a lot more natural features on it, but these three subject parcels don't. And then finally, with relation to township infrastructure, we've got some comments here on stormwater management. The stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, and that's reviewed during site plan review for compliance with the county standards. But the applicant has shown some items on the plan that appear to go above county standards and try to alleviate some of the existing drainage concerns that are taking place in the area, specifically north of Geddes Road, that they can discuss in more detail during their presentation. So that concludes the findings of our report. Our recommendation on the rezoning for the three subject parcels is approval to the R2 zoning district. We've prepared a model motion for the Planning Commission's consideration. We can modify the motion or prepare an alternate motion if requested. So that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor present? Do you have anything to add to what Patrick already told us?
Hi, Joe Score, Pulte Homes of Michigan. I don't want to, I do have something to add. I don't want to be redundant. Patrick did obviously a very nice job, a very comprehensive presentation. I do want to just talk a little bit about what we're proposing and what Del Webb is. Okay? Del Webb is the pioneer, the leader in age-restricted, fully amenitized housing. We are in probably 25 markets. It used to be where if you retired, you wanted to go to warmer climates, the sun belt, the west, and that's just not the case anymore. Del Webb's have proliferated through the north, the Midwest, the northeast corridor, the mid-Atlantic. It's for people, and I think it's quite obvious, you know, they're tired of sort of the maintenance, right? They've raised their families, they're either empty nesters, pre-retirees, retirees. They're not thrilled about cutting the grass, the landscaping, the snow. They don't want to clean rooms that they no longer step foot into. And essentially, but they also want amenities, they want to be active, they want to meet new people, make new friends, they want those social connections. And that's sort of the glue of Del Webb. And that's what we're offering here tonight. Just for example, you know, we're, in Michigan, which I think is a great example for tonight's conversation, we developed a Del Webb a mere 30 miles from here in Milford, Michigan. It probably opened in the, call it the summer of 2023, and so let's call it 18, 19, 20 months. We sold 240 homes. Okay? That's unheard-of absorption, right? And it's really because there's just outsized demand for this type of product, these types of communities, there's not enough supply, there's not really any supply, and it really says a lot about the appeal of the brand itself. Just trying to see what you can see. So this is obviously the project boundary, approximately 230 acres. So again, you've seen this, we talked about this, these are the two small parcels on the north side of Geddes Road, just under two acres, that is the subject property for tonight's rezoning. Again, consistent with the master plan. And I know Patrick went through this a little bit. As you can see, you know, three points of access, a sense of arrival off the main access point off of Geddes Road into the full clubhouse amenity center. And a little bit about the amenity center. Pulte is proposing a 17,000 square foot amenity center. It has fitness area and social gallery and golf simulator and indoor pool. We also are offering pickleball courts, tennis, walking trails. Again, it's sort of the anchor, the hub of the community that, again, people are interested in as they want that interaction with other residents. Just a few highlights, 230 acres, 514 homes, and I think this is an interesting point. As you know, and Patrick mentioned, the AAC ordinance allows up to four units per acre, assuming that there's sewer capacity. We are offering 2.3, well under the maximum allowable density under this ordinance. And we do that because we just think it's a more livable community. Del Webb has very, very strict standards with regard to community design, and we adhere to those standards. A fair amount of open space, 41%, 93 acres, expansive clubhouse, sidewalks, pathway systems, regional stormwater, everything that we just recently talked about. Next slide, please, Patrick. So I think this is an important slide and an important conversation, and typically we wouldn't get into this level of detail specifically with regard to drainage at a rezoning. But I think it's pertinent, I think it's relevant, as there are some drainage issues, not just in this area of the township, but in several areas of the township. And so a little bit of history here. So I think it was August of '23, there was a significant storm, a 500-year storm, and it impacted Geddes Road, Barr Road, impacted the Grandview Residence, among other areas of the township. And Pulte took a look at it. And again, this is well before that we've even had any proposal on this property, before this Del Webb was even a gleam in our eye. We saw, we understood the issue out there, and we wanted to figure out why it was happening, what was going on, and if there was something that we could do about it. So we engaged Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark is one of the most reputable, credible municipal engineers in southeastern Michigan. And we wanted to do a couple things. We said, hey, first, let's look at the Grandview Stormwater Management System to see, A, we developed it in accordance with approved plans, but we wanted to see if there was something that was wrong, or just something that wasn't working properly. And so they did that. And they came back and said, no, it was developed in accordance with the plans, and it meets Wayne County Design Standards for Stormwater. So that's a given. And then we said, okay, well, let's take a look at sort of an area-wide drainage study, specifically with the Fowler Creek. And so that's what they did. And again, this is all on Pulte's initiative. And so what they found, and there's a map associated with this, they found along the Fowler Creek, 15 different blockages along the Fowler Creek, okay? In addition, and there's a great picture of this, there's a bridge under Geddes Road, and you can see the sediment, a significant amount of sediment under that bridge, that blockage, that they also found. And Patrick, maybe you go to the next slide here for me? This represents it pretty well. So all these red triangles are those 15 blockages along the Fowler Creek. And this particular area right here is the bridge that I spoke about with all the sediment. So what Pulte is proposing to do, and again, this isn't our property, we don't have any jurisdiction here, this is either Eagle and/or county property, so we would need consent to do so. But we're proposing to clean out all these areas within the Fowler Creek, and then, again, remove all the sediment along, under that bridge along Geddes Road. And if you could go back, Patrick, there's a few other measures that we plan to take, too. There's provide additional flood compensation along Geddes Road, provide another direct connection from Geddes Road to the Fowler Creek, and then, of course, whatever additional studies, investigation relative to our proposal that we can do onsite to sort of mitigate the issue at hand. Go through that. Here's some of the architecture that we're proposing. Now, again, this is just typical, this isn't all the elevations, all the plans, but I think it's typical and representative of what we're proposing for this community. As you can see, a mix of materials, stone, brick, hardy board siding, some vertical siding. Now, I would like to take just a moment to talk about this architecture. I guess what I want to talk about here is the ordinance itself. So the AAC ordinance requires that all front facades have brick or stone as the primary building material with accents of hardy. And that's what we've done here. We're meeting your ordinance, and that's what we intend to do. And I think several of these elevations look great, I wouldn't touch them. I think they meet the ordinance, and I think they show really well. A couple of them, and this is a great example, I believe, in my opinion, it's a little bit forced, right? There's a fair amount, there's actually a little bit too much brick on this particular elevation. And what we would like to do is probably add some hardy accents to the first floor. We think that it's really, it would enhance the architecture, it would become more architecturally diverse, more architecturally pleasing, and frankly, it's really what consumers want. But again, it would fall, potentially fall out of compliance with your ordinance. So just a conversation tonight, looking for a little bit of direction, it's not binding, but I thought I'd take this opportunity to say, hey, do we want to do something a little bit different, which might be a better product, but maybe not quite in compliance with your ordinance? And I thought this was a great opportunity to have that conversation. This is the concept plan of the proposed clubhouse, as I mentioned. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please stick around because I'm sure we will have some questions. Before we open the public hearing, I just want to remind everyone here, just first of all, we are the Planning Commission. We make recommendations to the Township Board of Trustees. We do not make decisions, we make recommendations on rezoning requests. And there are 10 standards of review that Patrick went through in detail in his presentation. And there are 10 standards of review that Patrick went through in detail in his presentation that we have to consider as we're, we're thinking about any kind of rezoning, and I will go through those very briefly again. Will the proposed amendment be in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance? Is the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan of the township? Have conditions changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted, or was there a mistake in the zoning ordinance that justified the amendment? Will the amendment correct an inequitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than merely granting special privileges? Will the amendment result in unlawful exclusionary zoning? Will the amendment set an appropriate precedent, an inappropriate precedent, resulting in the need to correct future planning mistakes? If a rezoning is requested, which it is, is the proposed zoning consistent with the existing land uses of the surrounding property? If a rezoning is requested, could all requirements in the proposed zoning classification be complied with on the subject parcel? If a rezoning is requested, is the proposed zoning consistent with the trends in land development in the general vicinity of the property in question? And finally, if a rezoning is requested, what is the impact on the township infrastructure? And this is part, what we're doing tonight is part of a legal process. If the Planning Commission and the Township Board deny a zoning, rezoning application, we have to cite in our motion any or all of those 10 standards of review that I just went through that are not met in the application. So if the application meets all of those standards, we can't really deny it, just so you know. It's, I mean, we can, but we would, we would be opening the township up to a lawsuit. So I want people to understand why, what we're doing here, and why we're here, and what we can and can't do. We are going to open a public hearing. If you do want to speak, I will ask this of you, please start by stating your name and address for the record. Feel free to give us your comments, concerns, questions. Please stay on topic. If you drift off topic, I will remind you gently, we need to stay on topic. Please speak into the mic, too. We have a problem with not being heard if you don't talk directly into the mic. And then, I, also, we do have a three-minute time, time limit on, on speakers tonight. That's typical, we have that every night. And I request one thing, if somebody's already made your point, please don't repeat it. We do understand, we are listening to you, but we don't need to hear 10 people say the same thing, or even two people. And then, sometimes audiences break out into spontaneous applause during comment periods. I would request, please don't. This is a public hearing. We have a lot of items on our agenda tonight, we have several more items after these public hearings this evening, and we, we don't want to be here too late, I hope you can respect that. So I would just request that we don't, we don't applaud. And we will listen to your feedback, and we will, we will hear what you have to say, but we are not going to engage in a dialogue, so if you have specific questions, please know, we will note them for either Patrick or the project sponsor to respond to you at the end of the public comment period. So we will take, take notes on what you want to know, and we will get back to you at the end of the meeting if possible, or later. So I just wanted to let you know all of those things, and with that, I would love to entertain a motion for opening a public hearing.
Ma'am Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to open a public hearing. Please, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any members of the public want to speak on behalf of your opinions, sir?
How you doing? I'm Michael Duff, live at 50185 Geddes. I'm the little slot that they built the whole subdivision around, raised the grade, didn't follow ordinance 8682 on floodwaters. I can tell you why we're flooding. To the left of my house, the ditch does a 90 degrees, goes into an 18-inch culvert, goes two ditches into one on the north side, goes past the five houses that have lived there forever, and then it widens back out. So you have two ditches going into one, and then widen it back out. And Joe and the rest of them that were approved during the Grandview sub that went in, the so-called experts came in and said that that was going to be okay. I'm hearing the same thing, that it's going to be fine to add that to this now. Of course, it's not. I've lived in the house for 57 years, grew up in the house, played in all the fields, and I know all of the neighbors that are here for the last almost 60 years. My dad bought the house in 1964. I know Canton Township, I know this area. When they put Grandview sub in, they were able to reroute Fowler Creek. All the water goes east and north where it goes in there, so adding and cleaning up that stuff way north of that is, in my opinion, is not going to fix it. These so-called experts that were brought in for Grandview, we have lots of floods, we've had 11 floods since 2020. I have sandbags out in front of my house, so every time that it rains, we get more than two or three inches. You know, it diverts it onto Geddes Road. I've met with the township multiple occasions concerning, I have lots of pictures of cars flooded out. Somebody's going to get seriously injured or killed on Geddes Road there. When I met with the township September 5th, 23, 24, they said that there was a 18-month study for the Army Corps of Engineers that was going to take place before they decided to develop anything. I asked them to stop the development in Grandview and the north, this site coming in now, until they figured out the flooding for the citizens that are already here and endangering the passengers and vehicles traveling up and down Geddes Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And by the way, our, our planning staff will give you a high sign if you've reached 30 seconds to the, the end of your speaking period here.
Very good, and thank you, your explanation of how this will proceed and, and your role in this was very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Hearing everything today, my sense is...
Sir, I'm sorry, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Jim Sawyer, 50372 Weston, that is the street that empties into Bar Road, it's the first exit from Grandview Estates on the north side.
Thank you.
And speaking of that house, one month before we were due to close, there was a rainstorm, and there was four feet of water in our basement. Fortunately for my wife and I, Polte had to fix the mess. They had to replace the air conditioner, the sump pump, the furnace, the water tank, and the stairway because there was so much water there. Well, that was the first 500-year flood. The second 500-year flood occurred 26 months later in August of 2023. We bought a daylight basement home, the water was halfway up the three-foot-tall windows in the basement, it overflowed the drainage, it backed up through the sump pump, and again, damaged. It cost us $17,000 in repairs to the building, and I still have not recovered what we lost in terms of furniture and personal possessions. So my question is this, we hear a lot, heard a lot about this meets this criteria, this meets that criteria, what about the bigger context? What is this going to do to those of us on the south side of Geddes? I look at this map, and I don't see anywhere near as much retention area as we have in Grandview Estates, and we have been flooded out as have a good number of the people here, and that's why they're here today. As for the three egress ports from this new development, we have five, or we will have when the, the one onto Mott Road is finished. But let's look at a larger context. What happens to the traffic that goes down Denton Road to get onto Michigan Avenue? It's a very short traffic light with a lot of traffic heading to Ann Arbor. I don't think there is enough attention paid to the traffic. But as we've heard, things meet the standards, and as you said, you're locked in, you know, so we, we need to, to look at things a little closer and in a larger context, particularly in Canton where we have immense flooding problems. There's no doubt about that. Thank you.
My name's Keith Weasty, I live at 3952 Brookside. The gentleman from Polte spoke about flooding in 2023. It happened in 2020, 2021, 2022, two times in '23, two times in '24, so it's not just a one-time event.
You have to go back to the mic, sir.
Yeah, we can't hear you on the recording, so...
The water comes off of Bar Road and inundates the whole part of Grandview Estates. There is zero drainage on the south side of Geddes Road. Like Mr. Huff said, there's one drain, it's like having a straw and pouring a cup of water into it. No water comes through it, comes onto Geddes Road and creates a severe traffic hazard, and it's unpassable to automobiles. Number two, one of your criterias was number 10, and that's the traffic. Geddes Road is already inundated with traffic as it is, people coming from Ypsilanti, people going to Ypsilanti, people going to Ann Arbor. There is already enough traffic on that road as it is, and now you're going to add 524 more homes? It's going to be too much. If they want that, they need to add two lanes in that area, all the way to Washington Dock from Denton. That'll mitigate the traffic. But as is, it will not mitigate the traffic, it's only going to make it worse. There's been multiple accidents in that area already, with people pulling out of our development, and people are passing right there. So it's a very hazardous area right there, and it is zoned at 50, 50 miles per hour in that area as well. So if there's anything that was to hold this back, it would be number 10, and that is the traffic situation. Although they should, and they need to significantly deal with the flooding. I've heard all the flooding that they're going to deal with in the new site, they didn't mention anything about the people that are already flooding. And I did see the study that Polte had done with the engineers. Well, if they already have this study that was done over a year and a half ago, why haven't they done anything? They're just waiting to hold it over your head, so that, they say, well, you, you approve this, and then we'll fix this stuff. But they haven't fixed anything as of yet.
Sorry, please do not speak except at the podium.
Hi, my name is Kathy Reynolds, I live at 50085 Norfolk Court, it's the first street off of the entrance off of Geddes. I am reiterating the traffic issue where I've almost been hit three times now pulling out of our sub, because I don't think it was properly researched in terms of the road. It allows passing in that area. I have people, I'm turning into the sub, and they're trying to pass me on the left-hand side. I've had it three times now. Coming out of my sub, we're turning right, heading east on Geddes Road, and cars are passing, ready to hit me head-on, and I have to move out of the way extremely quick. I have young children, or young drivers, I should say, and elderly people in the neighborhood. You pull out of there, and you don't have quick, quick enough reaction, people are passing in that area. The study was not done. It's actually, absolutely treacherous when you pull out of there, or if you're pulling into the sub and people are, it says passing zone. How could that be a passing zone there when you're, and then now you're going to add the other homes on that side? It's going to be treacherous unless you make it a no-passing lanes. Again, it's just, three times now. I'm, and my father was killed in a car accident, so I have PTSD already, so I would appreciate it. And the, the whole Canton area, the infrastructure is just awful. I don't understand why you're allowing so many homes to be built, and the infrastructure is absolutely terrible to drive around here.
Thank you, you're going off topic, so I'll just remind you that we're talking about one development. Thank you, sir. We already heard people talk about the traffic, so thank you. If somebody's already made your point, I request that you, we are hearing it, I am taking notes, this meeting is being recorded. Sir, could you please wait till you get to the mic? Otherwise, we won't hear you.
Hi, my name is John Gillum, I own a property at 4868 Bar Road. I've been there three years, and I've been flooded three times because of the drain under Bar Road that goes to Polte's sub. Those pictures are Bar Road now, two days ago. Why is his construction equipment going up and down Bar Road? Are you crazy? It's a Wayne County road, you can't even pass on that road. Why don't you all go look at that road tomorrow? And these people are all flooded, you'll see the sandbags of that man's house. You got to stop. And you let Polte go down and do a little blacktop on Mott Road, you ain't bringing nothing down Bar Road no more. You tell Polte he's going to build over there, he thinks he's going to come down Mott to Bar and go across Geddes. That's exactly what's going on here. And he's your biggest builder here in Canton that supports you, you know it, and I know it.
Supports us?
Mess around, keep playing? All these people have had enough.
Could you please clarify how he supports us?
Well, at your summit out here, at your big wingdings you have down here, Polte's everywhere.
Sir, we are, we're appointed officials, we're not elected.
We're a volunteer board.
Can you take all your inspectors that go to Polte to check out his houses? You tell them, ride Bar Road.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Joe Kobinski, I live at 50384 Weston. You've heard from my neighbor, Jim. We bought, we had the house built, and the flooding is just beyond my belief. I'm a, I was a practicing civil engineer. I have actually hired York consultant, Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, in the past, so I've got some background in, in flood control. Concern I have is Fowler Creek. Those pictures that the gentleman showed about Fowler Creek, that wa, the water from our development, which is Grandview Estates, has nowhere to go. Polte has done a good job constructing within our development. The water drains the way it should. However, we're getting water that's actually flanking and going from Fowler Creek, because Fowler Creek is plugged. So the water goes from Fowler Creek, across farmlands, onto Bar Road, and literally, there's a flow on Bar Road during that, the flood event of August of '23. The water was a foot and a half deep. We don't clean up Fowler Creek, and as the representative from Polte had said, there was some kind of a, I, I, I'll talk to you about it later, but if, if they intend to open up Fowler Creek, a lot of the flooding issues in our localized area are going to go away. This is not rocket science. However, when you look at those blockages, the water has nowhere to go. And I'll be available to anybody and give them calculations to show how a blockage on the creek. And when you see an opening under a road, like we saw, the water from the development that's being proposed has to go through that opening. Where is it going to go? We can build all the detention ponds you want, so in my opinion, if you leave Fowler Creek the way it is, you'll need a detention pond probably the size of Lake St. Clair. Because the rains we're getting now, and it's a nationally-known fact that the storms are higher intensity than they've ever been. All of the previous approvals for drainage were based on history. That history's gone. We are now having more intense storms, and we, we have to be what I consider credible enough to, or believable enough to accommodate that. I'm sorry, but anyway...
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
I'm available to talk to anybody.
That's three minutes.
I work for the Corps of Engineers.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up, unfortunately. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anything that we haven't already heard? Sir?
Richard Peters, 3917 Colfax Court. I would like to second a lot of the other comments that were made today, but I won't. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Sloan for his cooperation and help me trying to understand what's, what's going on here. A one, a couple of things. On the, on the turn on, off of Brookside, there's that passing lane. I'm concerned, you put another development, there's one lane, and they go by there 40, 50 miles an hour. And I'm afraid if you got people trying to turn in, other people trying to turn out, it's going to be a bad case scenario. I talked to Mr. Sloan. I have a lot of concern on what's happening overall. I think Washtenaw County is proposing a water treatment that's going to provide thousands of gallons of water a day if that is approved. That's going to affect Canton Township. Follow-up on Joe's comments, there's no place for the water to go, and you all know it. And I understand Wayne County, we're afraid to stand up to them. Why aren't they here tonight? You know, I don't care what Wayne County says. They're not, you know, they approve stuff, walk away. I had hounded them last year to get some dead deer out of the ditches. I was over at one of our neighbor's house, watched two trucks in, in Canton Township, helped me try to get it cleaned up. There was a dumpster down there and a couple of dead deer. And I said, "Man, he's, he's really got some pull here." The trucks from Wayne County drove by about five miles an hour. Nobody got out, didn't see it. I went over there, I thought, "Well, did they clean up?" I, no, everything was there. So I called the county, the township again. They did come out and clean up. They'd never bothered to get out of the truck to look. The engineering department said, "I know, they can't, they can't see down there. They could not possibly see what was in that drainage ditch while I was stopping the truck and getting out and looking." So I have no confidence in Wayne County, and that's part of the problem. I lived on the other side of the state for most of my life, and I lived in Washtenaw County. Things that Canton Township are experiencing would not happen in Washtenaw County or Kent County, which is Grand Rapids. I can promise you that. I'm out of town, so, for time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our frustrations with Washten, with Wayne County as well, just for the record. Anyone else? Sir?
Hello, my name is Edward Presbenda. I live at 4175 Bar Road. I, I, I could reiterate what everyone said, but I'm not going to go through that because I do have the same problem as everyone else with the flooding. At two large occasions, five foot of water, all my furniture and cabinetry is gone. But the biggest problem I'm concerned about is no emergency vehicles can get to me. They haven't been able to get to me since about 2019, when the Grand View Estates came up. When this happens, I'm just dead, and no one can help me. I'm also concerned about what exactly is going to happen. Someone's going to clear out the Fowler Creek, and Pulte's going to do it, and as they said, it's not, it's out of their area. But who's going to maintain that? Why did the problem occur in the first place? Why aren't these questions being asked and looked into? I mean, aren't we supposed to be responsible for these creeks? Aren't we maybe supposed to be going to Washtenaw about why this happened in the first place? Why isn't it being maintained? But yes, I'm very concerned about how this happens because I don't trust Pulte. They actually, I used to have Bob Boyer's Meats next door to me. When the 2021 flood happened with five feet of water, 40 animals died and were just floating around. And that was from that meat processing plant, which Pulte told everyone else was a farm to sell houses. And Pulte, I've tried to contact them about assistance with me being flooded. They didn't help me whatsoever. I tried to call them on multiple occasions. I tried to email multiple people. They didn't do anything about it. They don't want to, they want to get their profit and then wash their hands of it. And so I really do not, I recommend no one trust the words of Pulte right now until the problem gets solved. Then you can go start moving into the rezoning. That's my recommendation.
Thank you. Just to respond to what you said, I was on the Planning Commission when Pulte came for Grand View Estates, and I recall the discussion about the animal processing plant there. It was in the packet, so I don't think they tried to hide anything from anybody.
They told people. They told people it was a farm.
Sorry.
All right.
Please, please do not speak out of turn. If you want to say something, please feel free to go up to the, to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, move to close the public hearing. Support.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Project sponsor, and Patrick, we have questions that we'd like to get some answers to. Would you like to address the flooding concerns?
Sure. If I can, I, I'd love to start with the, with the Boyer property. I know it's not totally relevant, but there's a fair amount of discussion about it. So just, so just so we're all on the same page that, you know, the, the Boyer property, the farm, was there prior to Pulte getting involved. We clearly disclosed it, but what's interesting about it is after we, you know, after we took possession and took title of Grand View, in Grand View South, the Boyer farm changed hands. He sold it. He sold it to a butcher who had a much more active operation. And again, was much more active than it was with just Mr. Boyer and the property. Subsequent to that, Pulte, on our own initiative, and this was after we sold most of the homes, if not all of the homes, south of Geddes Road, near this farm, in and around this farm, Pulte took it upon itself to buy the butcher out of his business. Okay, we bought him out. We didn't buy the land. We bought him out of his business, and we effectively moved him off the property. He is now in Romulus, okay? And that property, we also, again, part of the negotiation, we restricted it. There can be no more commercial activity, no more slaughterhouse, no more farming operation, no nothing, okay? It is effectively open space. And we did that, again, with no obligation to do so, well after we sold those homes, because it was the right thing to do, and we did it. So I think it's just, sometimes, these things get lost in the shuffle a little bit, and that's, that's, that's what happened relative to that particular property and that, and that farming operation. I'll, I'll answer traffic. You know, I'm not a traffic engineer. I will say that we have submitted a traffic study. It will be reviewed by township, staff, consultants, county. In general, this is the best of all worlds for traffic. Active adults, age-restricted communities have far fewer trips than single-family conventional homes. It's, again, don't quote me, it's around four trips per household for an age-restricted community, and for a single-family conventional community, it's about 10. Not only is it less than half the number of trips, but active adults, age-restricted retirees, pre-retirees, empty nester, they tend, okay, and let me emphasize 10. They tend to travel off, during off-peak hours and times. They're not doing the typical eight o'clock in the morning, five o'clock at night, go to school, drop your kids off, go to dance, soccer. So you have less trips, less people per household, and generally, generally, off-peak traffic. So it's, 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 as I said, it's, it's the best of all worlds for traffic. Drainage, I understand there's an issue. We totally get it. You know, when we engaged HRC, it was after the fact. It was after we developed Grand View, before this development, again, was even, you know, we had nothing to do with this development. We knew there was a problem. We wanted to understand what it was. We engaged this, this consultant, right? They came back with a report. We've been working with the township, with the Department of Roads, with the county, with the HOA. We've been fully transparent in terms of what's happening, why it's happening, what we can do about it, and we intend to take this course of action relative to HRC's recommendations. And they have specific recommendations, and I can state them if you'd like. But again, they're an independent third-party consultant that is an expert in this regard, and we initiated that engagement, and we're trying to do the right thing, and we hope to do so. And then, in terms of what we've done so far, you're right. We, again, there hasn't been a lot done relative to the drainage cleanouts and the dam and the culvert, but we, but again, we're still going back and forth with the various entities. We have cleaned out the ditch, or a part of the ditch, on, on the north side of Geddes Roads in conjunction with the Grand View permit. So we have taken some steps. There's more steps to take.
Yeah, just, just to add, there are restrictions on what people can do to our waterways, too, for good reason.
Right. There, I maybe, I'm, I think that was it. I'm probably missing something. I'm happy to answer any other questions that I may have missed.
Well, there were issues about traffic accidents, people slowing down to turn and being passed, which we, we have frustrations with Wayne County traffic that we've talked about in other meetings, and there's not a lot we can do.
Yeah, again, we submitted a traffic study, and there's going to be mitigation and our recommendations from, from the county relative to that traffic study, and of course, we're going to follow those recommendations.
I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed now, so we can't address follow-up questions. No.
No.
No, we can question them, I'm sorry. This is Roberts Rule, sir, sir, sir. We have rules of, of how to conduct these hearings, so we do ask you to abide by those. Thank you. Because, because I'm the chair of the Planning Commission, and he's addressing the questions and comments just like other people did to me?
There was one other point I, sorry, I neglected to answer. There was a question about construction traffic.
Yes.
Bar Road is where construction traffic goes. That is the construction traffic route. Typically, we've had a lot of discussions with the neighbors, with the residents, about traffic, construction traffic not coming in off Geddes, not coming out of Denton. And we've, we've been working with our trades, and we've been finding our trades. We've had, we've had, we've actually employed, you know, independent third-party security companies to stand at Geddes Road and Denton Road to, to turn traffic around when it gets kind of bad. So we're actively, we've been actively managing it for several years, but traffic is supposed to go down Bar, Bar Road as, as.
Sir, please address your questions to.
Please, please respect the, 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 please respect us. Please respect the, the process here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Patrick, did you have anything to add?
To go back to the, the actual rezoning, to kind of bring it back to where we started, the subject application is whether to rezone the three subject parcels on the screen from rural residential to R2. So if the rezoning is approved based on the standards of the zoning ordinance, it doesn't mean that the Planning Commission is endorsing the plan. It doesn't mean that the Planning Commission is necessarily satisfied or acknowledges complete information on the topics that have been discussed, like drainage and traffic and, and things of that nature. So I just want everyone to know that if the rezoning is recommended for approval, it, it doesn't mean that it's a tacit or implied approval of the development itself. There's still a lot of steps that are required of the developer through both the township, the county, and state agencies with respect to traffic, drainage, and a number of the site features that they'll be proposing. Canton also has consultants that review traffic studies. So we use a third-party traffic engineering consultant to review the traffic study, and so we'll be doing that probably in the coming months in terms of the overall development itself, not necessarily related to these three parcels. So we do understand there are a lot of concerns with the Grand View area, the site development area, and we're going to continue to have those discussions as the overall development proposal proceeds. The application for the Del Webb community, that's a special land use, and special land uses require public hearings. So when that overall development plan is sufficiently complete to bring to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, there will be another public hearing. There'll be a time for public comment, just like we did this evening. And that meeting will be much more specific to the development proposal itself, where if there are outstanding questions about traffic, drainage, anything that could result in that proposed development, those are, those are questions that we'll have more information on, the applicant will have more information on. And a lot of those comments and questions will be much more detailed to that larger development proposal itself. So I just wanted to take it from the, the broad scope of what was proposed in the concept plan, and then to bring it back to the question of the rezoning, and to say that there will be more meetings in the future to have these discussions, and we'll work with township and county agencies to try to get answers to some of these questions that have come up along the way.
Thank you, Patrick, and thanks for the reminder of what the purpose of tonight is. And just to reiterate, we will, we will have another hearing. We will listen. So I want to go to the, the board and, and the commission and just see what comments and thoughts we have. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Watkins.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Pulte reps, if you would, look at your map. I see the two subject parcels. Tell me, what's the acquisition status of those two parcels right now? Do you own them outright? Do you have a letter of holding? Do you have site control?
So we have control. They're under option. We do not own the property.
Got it. What about the third that's to the west, that's kind of carved out, Patrick, if you can go to the west on Geddes?
Yeah, this one here?
Further west, which it's carved out in the actual site plan of the development. There's a third parcel. Just want to know what the status was, if you, if you've even thought about acquiring. There we are.
That?
Yep. Right in the corner of your development. Yeah.
We don't, we don't have any control over those properties.
Got it. All right. I'll say this, 500 is, is a huge development. Someone who's done it for their entire life is a really big project. It's a really big project for anybody's neighborhood and/or city. You're talking about probably one of the biggest developments in Canton. I lived in one that's 300. I think many of us live in developments that are probably 200 or over. But what I will say is there's a lot of work for you guys to do. What we're here for is what Patrick told us we're here for. We're not here to debate the merits of your development tonight. We're here to talk about the, the zoning of the two parcels that you have under option that you haven't purchased yet. So I will say this, it sounds like you have a room full of not-so-happy people, so you got a lot of work to do. Now, we will talk about the traffic. Look, somebody's project is going to bite the bullet. We can't blame it all on Wayne County. They haven't, we, we sit here week after week, month after month. We go through projects. The traffic doesn't match the development. I, I gave the, the example of, we dress this really big turkey, we put it really well, and then we go and we try and fit it in our oven, and it doesn't fit. We've been doing that month after month. Somebody's project is going to get the ax because it doesn't fit, and the traffic doesn't allow for the project to happen. Not saying about this project, but I will say when it comes back for a site plan review, you're going to have a lot of questions to answer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners thing?
I agree with Commissioner Watkins. Mic was off. So I agree with Commissioner Watkins, whatever he just said. Obviously, there will be another hearing where we will go over the whole project, and there will be a lot of question at that time, which we will ask. At the same time, Madam Chair, we have discussed it multiple other times where we talked about Wayne County and, and things which they should be responsible for and things which they should be doing for our community and which is not happening, and the perfect example of that is the Fowler Creek. The maintenance of that creek, somebody here in the public asked that question, that why we haven't done that maintenance, and why are we at that, at this point now, where Pulte has to come and, and do something they are not even supposed to be doing? So I would definitely request you to, of the city also, to get Wayne County involved, and we need to find a solution for this thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eganberger?
Thank you. I agree with previous commissioners. My house was flooded a year ago. I know how that is not fun. It's frustrating. I'm frustrated to hear that the people that live in the Grand View Estates are dealing with this year after year. And I guess my question is, well, so what if, what if this? And I guess my question is, well, so what if, what if this other project doesn't get approved? What's going to happen to, because you're saying that you'll fix Fowler Creek, but will you fix Fowler Creek, or will somebody fix it and, and get rid of all this flooding? This, this is crazy that the people that are living there are having to deal with this year after year. And my concerns are, when this area was built, you know, what was the plan so that it didn't flood? And I'm concerned that whatever those plans were, aren't working. And so, I'd like to make sure that whatever the plans are, that it works, because this is something that we can't have happening to everybody year after year. When it comes to the zoning, that's a whole different question, and as, as our chair said, we have to look at the 10 questions and whether those are being answered. But I'm, I agree, big concerns about putting a huge development in when we already have a lot of issues.
Thank you. Commissioner Egenberger. Commissioner Weber?
Thank you. Hear everything everyone said, understand the issues. I do have a question, I guess, for Patrick, and I heard the representative from Pulte address it also. What is the Army Corps of Engineers study that's being done? What is the scope of that study?
The Army Corps is looking at a number of areas throughout Canton as part of its analysis. The latest that I've heard on, on the project, and it's a pretty large project, is that the engineering consultant, Wade Trim, I've mentioned it before, they have, they're our traffic engineering consultant, they have traffic engineers, they're a very large firm, and they also do stormwater analysis. And so, Wade Trim is doing analysis in the area, and my understanding is that a lot of the surveying has been completed by Wade Trim and is in the process of being transmitted to the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers, from there, will be building out a lot of its modeling, and there's several months ahead in the process of the ongoing study, and it will be a public process. At the same time, the township is looking at stormwater ponds throughout the community, and also working with Wayne County on drain maintenance to the extent that we can. So, that's some of the latest that I've heard in terms of the ongoing Army Corps of Engineers project, as well as the township collaborating with Wayne County on drainage.
What, so what is the ultimate timeline for that study to be completed?
I don't have a timeline on it, but it's, it's several months ahead. I just don't know the exact schedule.
So, when you say several months ahead, we're talking like this year yet, next year?
That I'm not really sure of, but I can talk to our engineers and try to get more information for the Planning Commission, just in terms of any updated schedule that we might have.
Do you have any idea what that study might tell us as far as what the specific area, I mean, is, will it address? I feel for these people, and I, I'm very hesitant to go forward on something that's obviously an ongoing issue without some sort of direction as to what we can do to, to address this issue.
This, those questions I don't have the answers to, and I'm not a, I'm not an engineer or civil engineer, so, you know, I can, I can ask our, our team and the people that have worked on it and worked with our consultants to try to get more specific information and bring it back to the Planning Commission, but I don't have those answers at hand, and I don't want to try to guess.
And I know we're not addressing the specific use tonight, we're just stressing, addressing the rezoning, but one of the criteria in the rezoning is the impact on infrastructure, which includes stormwater and drainage and all that sort of thing. So, I'm, and I understand that these parcels are small in, in the context of the overall development, but again, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to go forward tonight until I have some more answers about the flooding issue, because the flooding issue is going to exist whether this development happens or not. So, I'm troubled by that. The traffic issues are, are not new. I mean, we have traffic issues all over the township, but the flooding is, is a major concern for me for any development that would go on this property, not just this one. That's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Foster?
First, I'd like to say to everyone who came and spoke about this development, thank you for coming out tonight. I hear you. I empathize with you. I understand the flooding concerns, the traffic concerns, and that's something that we take seriously at the Planning Commission, as has been said by a number of my fellow commissioners. Tonight, we are here to address the rezoning, and I hear Commissioner Weber, and I have a slightly different view. I think that we can move forward with the rezoning, but there is a lot of conversation that needs to happen before we get to site plan and special land use and all of that, and I think we will have a lot more information and data about flooding and what can be done and traffic at that point. So, I'm willing to move this forward till the next step, but as Commissioner Watkins has said, there's a lot of questions that will need to be answered before we move the next step forward. The other thing that I wanted to mention, a gentleman, I don't know if he's still here, yes, he is, mentioned that public safety cannot get to you in the case of emergency. If that is, if that is an issue, I would ask that you bring that to the township. We have our deputy supervisor over there, and I think something should be done about that. So, please address that.
Absolutely.
That, that is something important, and I thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Thanks for remembering to address that. I had that on my list and neglected. So, Commissioner Lee?
Yes, I'm, I'm comfortable with moving forward, but I think the analogy of the turkey, we're having that all over the township. The turkey is too big, and we don't have the facilities capable of doing it. This road was designed for, what, farm equipment, maybe? It's not designed for development, and we got to attack this a little better. And our challenge is trying to make it meet the same timeline as the developments. That's our issue. We probably could hit there, but we got to start somewhere. So, I'm okay with moving forward, but these are, all have to be addressed, and to have a new development that's flooding, that makes no sense at all to me. That's weird. And I have one question, if you know. How did it get so bad as far as these creek blockages? Is that over time? It's just wearing out?
Yeah, it's a great question. I couldn't answer it. I think it's just, you're right, it's over time, maybe there's a lack of maintenance. It's just, it's not atypical. It happens, it happens all over, both on the micro level and the macro level. It's unfortunate, but it's nature of the beast.
This is one thing personal in our subdivision, is that dealing with Wayne County, we tried to get them out to get a, a log moved. The tree fell down. I'm sorry, the tree fell down. And what they said was, if it does not block the drain, they don't care, because it's not a problem, because it's not dropping a drain, and I think this links to Rouge, I believe. I can't think of what it was, but anyway, but that's their stance on it. So, we got rid of the tree ourselves in the subdivision, but the, the challenge I have is, here you have a blockage. There is no excuse for them not to get this straightened out. So, that's my concern, is if you got a blockage, you need to fix it, and that's Wayne County's job. So, I think you got a valid point of getting back to Wayne County and tell them, look, handle it, get it straight, and if they work with you, that'll make it even better. That's where I am. But I'm okay with moving forward, we just got to get the pig, you know, get the turkey prepared right and get it ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Janowski?
As everyone at Pryler said, I can only focus on what's in front of me now, and I can't look at what's coming up in the future. So, right now, all that's there, it's actually pretty nice that everybody brought this up and brought it to your attention to give you more time to look at it. But right now, all I'm doing is evaluating the rezoning and looking at the rezoning. I don't see any reason why I can't approve it, so appreciate you all, though.
Thank you, and I, I second what my fellow commissioners have said. I really do appreciate everybody coming out and letting us know what's going on. I'm sorry I was a little bit hard on you, but I think we need to, we need to have an orderly meeting, so I try to enforce that. But, but I do appreciate everybody's comments, and I, I do, as I said before the public hearing, the 10, the 10 questions that we have to review have, I think, been adequately addressed by the petitioner, and I don't see a reason not to move forward with the, the rezoning request, but I do see that there will be a lot of questions in the future, and we will certainly look forward to people's feedback and thoughts at that time as well. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll take the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Move to recommend approval of the request in planning application number 120-RZ-8508 to rezone three parcels, parcels number 120-TAC99, TAC0009, TAC002, 120-TAC99, TAC007, TAC000, and 120-TAC99, TAC0008, TAC000 from RR, rural residential to R2, single-family residential, as the proposal meets the standards of Section 27.06D4 of the zoning ordinance as stated in the staff report based on the following findings. One, the proposed R2 zoning district is in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two, conditions have changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted, and the proposed rezoning to R2 will not grant special privileges. Three, the zoning amendment will not result in unlawful exclusionary zoning, it will not set an inappropriate precedent. Four, the proposed R2 zoning is consistent with existing land uses of surrounding property and is consistent with the trends in land development in the general vicinity of these properties. Five, compliance with the standards of R2 zoning district are attainable or would be, or would become more conforming. And six, the proposed R2 zoning by itself does not result in negative impacts on the township infrastructure with a final determination to be made during development application review. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure. Egenberger, yes. Foster? Commissioner Foster, sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zubor?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Patrick, next steps?
Sure. The next steps will be, the rezoning is a recommendation from the Planning Commission, so the application will proceed to the Township Board of Trustees for action, and the Board of Trustees, because it's an ordinance amendment, holds two readings on an amendment, so that will be coming at an upcoming board meeting. I'm not sure which one, but for those who are interested, if you want to follow the agendas of the Board of Trustees, you can see this case as it proceeds. If the rezoning is ultimately approved by the board, we will likely see at a future meeting the special land use application for the development that we discussed tonight, at which time there will be a public hearing and more discussion on those topics that we discussed this evening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just add one thing?
Certainly.
I know Commissioner Watkins addressed this, and I voted in favor of this somewhat reluctantly, but there are a lot of questions that are going to have to come, be answered about this development, particularly dealing with the drainage and the stormwater and that sort of thing. So, just for those in the audience, this isn't the final time you'll have to be able to speak on this, so please stay on top of what's, what's going on and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to give everybody a minute to please quietly exit if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. I know. Sorry, folks, we do have the rest of our agenda to cover, so thank you. Thank you. I got your email, too, or we got your email, so thank you. If anybody standing in the back wants to have a seat, feel free. All right, we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda. Got to get the agenda back in front of me here. The next item on our agenda is IMAC Properties LLC and CESO rezoning, during which we will be considering rezoning for several parcels on Al Smith Ave, Lots Road, and Ford Road. The parcels are located on the south side of Ford Road between I-275 and Lots Road. We are talking about proposed rezoning from MRD, Midrise Development and Corporate Park Overlay District, to C3, Regional Commercial District and CBD, Central Business District Overlay. So, Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. The proposed rezoning application is to rezone four parcels from the MRD, Midrise Development, and the Corporate Park Overlay District, to C3, Regional Commercial District, and Central Business District Overlay, the CBD. So, currently, the underlying district is MRD. The applicant's proposed to rezone it to C3, and the overlay zone is currently Corporate Park Overlay, and they propose to change the overlay district to Central Business District Overlay, CBD. Before I get started, we've received a number of public comments on this application, and I wanted to take a moment before getting into the staff review letter itself, just to clarify some of the items where we've received correspondence directly, and I know there's been correspondence out there elsewhere about the validity of the public hearing and the application itself. First off, this is a rezoning application. A rezoning application can be made by an owner of property or someone who's authorized to make the application on behalf of the property owner. So, up on the screen, and this is also in the Planning Commission packet, is the zoning application itself, and the name of the legal owners of the property is IMAC Properties LLC, and this is signed by the property owner. Additionally, our zoning amendment application has a separate spot on the application under number three for an agent processing the amendment if it's different than the owner. In some cases, the owner of the property will consent to the rezoning application, but the owner won't be the applicant themselves. The applicant will be an agent. It could be an attorney, it could be a realtor, it could be a developer, it could be an engineer, anyone who's legally authorized to make an application on behalf of the owner. In this case, the applicant is CESO. They've given their information on the application, their contact info, so CESO is authorized to make the application. Additionally, there's an accompanying letter that's also in the packet from the owner of the property, signed by the owner of IMAC Properties LLC, that gives written authorization to CESO to make the application on their behalf. So, I wanted to clarify, because the name Sheets Gas Station has been thrown out there, and I'll talk about the proposed end user in a little bit, but there are cases, many cases, where there's a prospective end user, and they may have agents that work for them and work with them that may make applications on their behalf for a number of reasons. Sometimes businesses that are in, that are in the business of, let's say, if it's a fast-food restaurant, if they're in the business of operating fast-food restaurants and not necessarily of applying for rezonings, sometimes they'll have agents do the rezonings on their behalf. Same as if there's a property owner who may just want to sell or lease their property, they may not want to carry the application forward, because doing rezoning applications is just not something that they want to do. So, rezonings are oftentimes done through agents. Other times, an end user may want to conceal the name from the public until a certain point in time, although in the application itself, Sheets is not named, they're not required to be named. The end user, as far as the application for rezoning is concerned, is not necessary and is not relevant. But it is optional, and it is something that we encourage people to do so that we can have a more productive discussion as part of the rezoning. And in this case, they, the corporation of Sheets, they've identified themselves on the plans that are in the application, and they've been identified by the traffic engineer, Fleece and Vanderbrink. So, I think the name Sheets is mentioned roughly 28 times in the packet. So, it's not concealed, it's not anything that is kept secret, it's treated just like any other end user would be in the normal course of doing a rezoning application. So, I wanted to start with that, just to show that this is a lawful application, and the correct information is on the application. Now, regarding the public notice sign, which specifically we've got, had questions about, the public notice sign that is required to be posted at a property is required to identify the applicant on the sign. In the previous application that we just heard for Everbrook, the applicant was Pulte Homes of Michigan, and as they said, Pulte doesn't own... Homes of Michigan, and as they said, Pulte doesn't own those properties, they have an option on them, but the owners have given Pulte permission to apply for the rezoning on their behalf, and the sign along Geddes Road states Pulte, because they're the applicant even though they're not the property owner. And in that case, they're also the agent carrying forward the application and the developer. In this case, CESO is the authorized applicant, they are named on the application, that's signed by the owner, and the owner is given written authorization for CESO to be the applicant in this case. So naming CESO on the sign is proper, and fulfills the requirement of identifying the applicant on the sign. With regard to the end user and the proposal being Sheets, a couple of items on that is, if they want to disclose the name of the company, then that's the prerogative of anyone on their team. Also, as in the previous rezoning application that we heard this evening, just because someone has named an end user, and even if they've submitted a concept development plan, the review of a rezoning application and a recommendation on that rezoning application is not a preliminary plan approval, it's not a tacit plan approval, it's nothing indicating future plan approval or disapproval by the Planning Commission. It's there for discussion purposes in terms of development intent, I think it makes for a more informative discussion on a rezoning application, and in some cases, we get into a discussion about development itself, and we bring it back to what the rezoning application is about, which is the four subject properties and the respective zoning districts. But it does allow us to discuss a little bit about the potential end user, and some preliminary comments that the Planning Commission may make that are not necessarily relevant to the rezoning itself, but may give the applicant and the public some indications in terms of things that they're looking at from a development standpoint. So I wanted to talk about that a little bit, just in terms of clarifying the validity of the application and the legality of the public notice that's been given. We can address other questions that come up through the course of this meeting as they come up, but I wanted to start that before getting into the review letter itself, because I just wanted to just put on record that the public hearing was lawfully noticed, that the sign has the right information, and the fact that Sheets wasn't on the sign, it's not an intent to try to conceal the name, the name is in the application materials that have been submitted by the applicant, but it's a matter of procedure in putting the name of the applicant on the sign and not necessarily who the end user may be, because even if the rezoning is approved, it's not a guarantee that Sheets will bring an application forward, it's not a guarantee that Sheets will necessarily be the end user. And stepping back from that, there's not even an indication that future use of a gas station would even be approved. There are a lot of steps left even after the rezoning process that have to happen before the township can make a determination of whether to approve that use or not. So, with the rezoning that is before the Planning Commission this evening, this rezoning is just for the zoning district for C3 and the Central Business District Overlay. These districts do not necessarily permit standalone gas stations unless they are affiliated with a larger retailer of 50,000 square feet, or if it's reconstruction of an existing gas station. The reason that the applicants are bringing forward the rezoning application for C3 and Central Business District Overlay is to have a zoning district that's more compliant with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, which we'll address in our review. And also, they've indicated future intent to apply for a planned development district application, which does allow for any use in the zoning ordinance to be part of a PDD application, but there are many criteria in a PDD application that have to be met before it's eligible for approval by the Planning Commission and the Township Board. So, if the applicant intends to proceed with a future planned development district application and a future site plan application, those decisions are made at future meetings in those future processes, and things related to a development such as noise, hours of operation, lighting, things of that nature, those are items that are reviewed in the course of a development application where we do have tangible standards in our zoning ordinance that regulate those off-site impacts that we apply during the course of an actual development review, such as a special land use, a PDD, or a site plan, but they're not conditions that we can apply as part of a rezoning. Similar to the previous rezoning case that we had this evening, this is a standard rezoning application without conditions, so the applicant can't offer conditions as part of this application, and we can't ask for them. This is strictly the question of whether the subject property should be rezoned to C3 Regional Commercial with a Central Business District Overlay. So, we can answer some procedural questions as we go forward through the staff review. So as we stated, if the parcels are rezoned to C3 and CBD overlay, the applicant proposes a development that would include an automobile filling and multi-use station, which would be subject to planned development district review. So there's no guarantee, even if this rezoning was recommended for approval, that's not any indication from Canton of whether PDD approval would be likely based on what circumstances might come up during that future PDD application if it's made. Some history about this site in particular, this site's at the southwest corner of Ford Road and Lots Road. In 2023, the owners of these parcels had applied to rezone the parcels to C4 Interchange Service District. That particular application was denied by the Township Board of Trustees, and the Planning Commission had also recommended denial of that application. The reason being is that the comprehensive plan recommends that the future zoning of this site be C3 and Central Business District Overlay. So, our recommendation last year for denial of the proposed C4 zoning was based on the policies that are in the master plan and the recommendations. In our review letter of that proposal last year, we did express support in our letter for the proposed C3 district and the Central Business District Overlay. For land uses in the C3 district, those are noted in the ordinance, and we also emphasize that in the C3 district, automobile filling stations, they're only allowed if they're affiliated with an individual tenant in a shopping center having a gross floor area of 50,000 square feet, or if it's reconstruction of an existing station. So if there's a future gas station proposal that wouldn't be based necessarily on the underlying zoning, there would be a planned development district application that proposes a use that's outside of the district, but would have to meet several standards of Section 27.04 at that time when that future application is made, if they make it. And the PDD standards, they do allow for all uses that are allowed in the zoning ordinance, but there are certain standards that have to be met in terms of having definite benefits to the community, meeting a lot of different standards, having market demand, and looking at impacts on township infrastructure, and those are all evaluated at the time of land use development approval, and not necessarily at rezoning, where there could be a number of future uses that are affiliated with the site if it's zoned to C3 and the Central Business District Overlay. So we'll go through the 10 criteria of the zoning ordinance with respect to this rezoning application, which are also in our review letter. The first criteria is, will the proposed amendment be in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance? There are many areas of the proposed rezoning that comply with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The land development standards of the zoning ordinance include a number of features like density setbacks, building height, land use parking, loading, access management, landscaping, screening, lighting, dumpster enclosure, signage. Many of those standards relate to the type of character and developed character we want within our community and along our corridors. The C3 district and the Central Business District Overlay, those are some of the predominant districts along Ford Road west of I-275. So, if you're along Ford Road between I-275 and just west of Canton Center Road, that is mostly Central Business District Overlay. And the master plan recommends extending that Central Business District Overlay eastward, east of I-275, to the township boundary. And within the last year or so, there have been two rezonings along Ford Road east of I-275 that have taken properties out of the Corporate Park Overlay and into the Central Business District Overlay. One of those was the Top Canton project on the north side of Ford Road between I-275 and Lots. The other rezoning was the south side of Ford Road, the Guitar Center Building, where that Corporate Park Overlay was removed. The proposed amendment would rezone the property from MRD and the Corporate Park Overlay to C3 and the Central Business District Overlay. The Corporate Park Overlay was created to promote development in accordance with the Lots Road Corridor Development Plan adopted in the late 1990s. Since that time, there's been a new comprehensive plan that's been adopted that recommends elimination of the Corporate Park Overlay District, and using different zoning designations as a result. The proposed amendment therefore would be in accordance with the intent of the zoning ordinance by carrying out the comprehensive plan policy by reducing and eliminating the Corporate Park Overlay District. The Lots Road Corridor strategies in the current comprehensive plan include the following three policies which relate to this rezoning application. First is repeal of the remaining portion of the Corporate Park Overlay District Guidelines and amend the zoning map to remove those Corporate Park areas. Second, to amend the boundaries of the Central Business District Overlay and extend that on the north side of Ford Road and south side of Ford Road to the Willow Creek Drain, which is in this area. This area is north of Willow Creek and south of Ford Road. Third, it states to encourage a change of zoning for the area located south of Ford Road and north of Willow Creek Drain between Lots Road and I-275 from MRD to C3 Regional Commercial. There are not a lot of areas of the comprehensive plan that are that specific with rezoning, but this is as specific as the comprehensive plan gets with proposing rezonings. It's noted areas south of Ford Road, north of Willow Creek, between I-275 and Lots Road, it's very clear that the intent is to have that area zoned C3 with Central Business District Overlay, the CBD. Whenever a rezoning application is proposed, the zoning ordinance requires a plot plan that includes a number of items, including the proposed development layout, and this plan is not an official plan, it only illustrates how a proposed development could be located if the proper rezoning and applications were fulfilled. In this case, it would require not only a rezoning, but also a planned development district application and a site plan approval. So, any kind of comments that we have on that layout plan, they're just staff observations, it's not an indication of whether we would be likely to recommend approval or denial of the application. So the first item that we note is the land use, and as we note, the automobile filling station is not a permitted use in the C3 district as a new use, but would be subject to the PDD standards if the applicant applies for a PDD, and they've indicated it in the application that they will. On the south side of the site, there's a row of 11 to 12 electric vehicle charging stations proposed. Regarding the intended land use, we don't have a lot to discuss in our zoning letter about the proposed intended land use, because there are several uses that are permitted in the C3 district that we don't discuss in our letter, but the applicant would be eligible to apply for if the rezoning is approved. So, we do acknowledge the proposed use that's indicated on the layout plan submitted by the applicant, but there are a lot of steps to go through the application process beyond the rezoning application before we can really get into the particulars of the use and the site development that's shown on that layout plan. But there are some items that we do want to note with that layout plan regardless of the use itself, and the first is the access management. That layout plan shows three access points to the site, two are proposed from Lots Road and one proposed from Ford Road through Al Smith Ave. The access from Ford Road is proposed to be right-in, right-out only, so left-hand turns would be controlled there. We might recommend, we may recommend in the future, having only one access from Lots Road, which we would recommend being located as far south as possible. The reason being is that with busy intersections, we try to recommend that the intersections and driveways be as far away from the major road intersections as possible. So, again, this is a future development observation, nothing would be decided this evening, or even as part of this overall application in terms of where the driveways would be. But our recommendation for the driveways would be to have one driveway off of Lots Road as far south as possible, preferably to align to the driveway on the east side of Lots Road. For the proposed access on the north side where the layout plan is proposing right-in, right-out only, we would recommend considering to extend a driveway west to the site to access future traffic signal at the intersection of the proposed Top Canton facility. And at last week's Planning Commission, Top Canton was on the agenda, and we discussed quite a bit about traffic, not just within the site, but along Ford Road, Lots Road, and some of the traffic impacts, and we spent a lot of time talking about the traffic study. And there's a proposed traffic light to be located at the entrance drive to the Top Canton Development at the driveway on the west side of the Tile Shop Building. If that proceeds, and if that traffic light goes in, we would recommend considering trying to get a drive from the south side of the traffic light and through to the subject site that's subject to the rezoning, although it's an off-site consideration, and when we talk about off-site considerations, a lot depends on existing easements, approvals of road agencies, cooperation with any landowners that are adjacent or off-site, so there are a lot of steps that go into that. This is just a comment of potential access management in terms of having options, so that if there are patrons of this business, and it could be any commercial use, even if it's a commercial retail use that's permitted in the C3 district, if they want to go back to the highway, as the layout plan is shown, they would have to get onto Lots Road, and 100% of that traffic would have to turn left onto Ford Road back to the highway. Having some off-site access going westward, if there's a future traffic light there, it opens up some access management opportunities and could relieve the intersection of Ford and Lots. So, there's been a traffic study that's been submitted, and we can talk about some of the initial findings of that study, but that's just an observation with the access management that we've made at this time for future consideration. There's been a traffic study that's been prepared by Fleece and Van Der Brink. It concludes that all the study intersections are expected to operate acceptably at a level of service D or better during AM and PM peak periods, subject to improvements noted in the traffic study. Those improvements include optimizing the signal timing splits during all the peak periods, providing the right-in, right-out only access for the proposed site drive on Ford Road, providing a right-turn D cell lane along eastbound Ford Road at the driveway, and restriping the existing pavement along southbound Lots Road to provide right-turn deceleration lane to the site. That traffic study has not yet been reviewed by Canton Township's Traffic Engineering Consultant, so any concerns with that would be addressed at a future development application, but it is something that we'll be taking a look at in the coming months. Also, Ford Road is under the jurisdiction of MDOT, and Lots Road is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, so those road agencies will determine road access, and if there's any improvements to the road network on account of a future development application, the applicant would have to work with the road agencies on any required improvements. Going back to the secondary zoning criteria and the comprehensive plan, the future land use map of the comprehensive plan classifies this site as general commercial. Policy 1.2.3 of the plan states, quote, "Establish a general commercial land use designation on the future land use map for regional and highway-oriented commercial uses. Regional and commercial uses generally serve the retail and service needs of the entire township and adjacent areas, and include larger multi-tenant shopping centers with large anchor tenants located on primary arterial roadways that carry high volumes of traffic. Highway-oriented commercial uses should be located within a mile, or a one-mile radius of a freeway interchange, and provide uses convenient to the traveler or overnight visitor in the community." Although that is consistent with the C3 and the C4 zoning districts, the Lots Road Corridor zoning strategies of the plan are specific with the C3 district and the CBD overlay. At the same time, the comprehensive plan, it does state that the highway-oriented commercial uses should be located within a one-mile radius of a freeway interchange, and provide uses convenient to the traveler or overnight visitor in the community. We don't believe that those two policies are intended to work against each other. In other words, it doesn't necessarily- In other words, it doesn't necessarily mean that the C-4 land uses should be permitted on a site-zoned C-3. Rather, it indicates that areas within a one-mile radius of a freeway interchange should be given additional consideration for this type of use. If a PDD application is made in the future, requirements of that application include compliance with the comprehensive plan, definite benefits, market demand, minimum open space, positive aesthetics, and accessibility requirements. Affirmative findings can't be made on those items just based on the layout plan that's been presented, because a PDD application requires much more detail than what's permitted in a simple, or what's proposed in a simple rezoning layout plan. The third criteria of the rezoning application is whether conditions have changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted, or if there was a mistake in the zoning ordinance to justify the amendment. The Corporate Park Overlay District was not a mistake. It was a policy that was adopted. Later, when the master plan was amended, it changed policies that the Corporate Park Overlay be removed and replaced with the Central Business District Overlay. Therefore, the proposed rezoning is reflective of changed conditions since the zoning ordinance was adopted. The fourth criteria is will the amendment correct an inequitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than merely grant special privileges? In the Corporate Park Overlay, all land uses are special land uses. Therefore, no applicant in the Corporate Park Overlay has any certainty of use approval when an application is made. As a result, development activity and building reoccupancies in the Corporate Park Overlay have been slower than they have been in the Central Business District Overlay, which until recently was only located west of I-275. Because the comprehensive plan recommends C-3 and CBD overlay, rezoning to those districts would create a more equitable situation than the existing MRD and Corporate Park Overlay. The fifth criteria is that the amendment is not a result of exclusionary zoning. The sixth criteria is will the amendment set an inappropriate precedent resulting in the need to correct future planning mistakes? In 2024, as we previously noted, there were two rezoning applications approved on the east side of I-275 that removed the Corporate Park Overlay and installed the Central Business District Overlay in two areas, as well as rezoned to C-3. Therefore, the proposed amendment will continue a precedent that has been established for parcels in the Corporate Park Overlay north of Willow Creek, which is not contrary to the comprehensive plan and overall vision for the development in the area. And again, this finding is without respect to the intended use that's noted in the application. The seventh criteria is if a rezoning is requested, is the proposed zoning consistent with the existing land uses of surrounding property? The sites to the northwest, northeast, and the east are zoned C-3, and they're largely retail multi-tenant facilities. The proposed C-3 District and CBD overlay is consistent with those land uses. Land uses to the west are single-family residential, which are owned by the same property owner on the rezoning application. If those residential properties remain as residential use, there are landscaping and screening provisions in the zoning ordinance that can be considered at the time of development application review. There are many areas within Canton where single-family residences, but the C-3 and CBD overlay district and mitigation measures can be considered at the time of development application review, depending on the circumstances. Finally, there are some automotive-related uses to the property to the south. The eighth criteria is if a rezoning is requested, could all requirements in the proposed zoning class be complied with on the subject parcel? The subject site could comply with the standards of the C-3 and CBD districts for the minimum lot area, lot width, building height, minimum front yard setback, and side and rear yard setbacks. Although the current building at the address at 39933 Ford Road, which is located at the southwest corner of Ford and Lots, would be within the 50-foot front yard setback from the Lots Road right away, this would be a non-conformity that would continue. The ninth criteria is if a rezoning is requested, is the proposed zoning consistent with the trends in land development in the general vicinity? As we previously noted, development allowed under the proposed C-3 District and CBD overlay are consistent with the trends in land development in the general area. The current Corporate Park Overlay and the CBD overlay recommended by the comprehensive plan have very specific design standards in the zoning ordinance that are different than the underlying zoning districts. And the sites under these overlay districts have a design character that distinguishes them from other commercial sites located elsewhere in Canton. Finally, the 10th criteria of a rezoning is that if a rezoning is requested, what is the impact on township infrastructure? The subject parcels have access to public water and sanitary sewer, though any extensions of the mains will be, or may be necessary for any intended development, regardless of whether it's the proposed land use that's noted on the rezoning application, or any other land use under the proposed C-3 zoning district. Stormwater management will be under the jurisdiction of Wayne County and possibly MDOT if there's an outlet proposed to the storm sewer within the MDOT right away. These parcels access Ford Road and Lots Road directly, with Ford Road access available through Al Smith Avenue. We will defer future comments on the traffic and access management to those road agencies, as well as to the Traffic Engineering Consultant for Canton Township regarding the traffic study review and the recommendations for the access management. So, based on the 10 criteria, we believe that the proposed rezoning of the four parcels to C-3 and Central Business District Overlay are in accordance with the 10 standards, and that the 10 standards of rezoning are met. Therefore, our recommendation is to approve the proposed C-3 zoning and the proposed CBD overlay zoning based on those criteria. We've proposed a model motion to that effect in our review letter, and we can make any adjustments to that motion if requested. So that concludes our staff review, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor present? Thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Patrick, for that detailed presentation. You're gonna make me look bad now, so I'll try to do my best here.
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Amon Walia from Sheets. You can find me at 39300 West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. We are here this evening to discuss our proposed rezoning from MRD to C-3 with associated overlays. But before we do that, I would like to tell you a little bit about Sheets, what Sheet So Sheets was founded in 1952 by Bob Sheets in Altoona, PA. Over seven years and nearly 800 locations later, Sheets is a leading regional restaurant and a convenience retailer who is still wholly owned and operated by the Sheets family every single day. No franchisees here, all corporately owned by the Sheets family. Next slide, please. Yep, thank you. Fifteen members of the Sheets family work on the business every single day, including the one leading the charge for land development in Michigan. This in-depth family involvement helps us stay true to our values and help us put forward an offer cannot find outside of Sheets in southeast Michigan. The Sheets experience is a unique offer that will offer the community a new experience that includes robust grocery and convenience options, an award-winning made-to-order menu out of our kitchens which boasts 1.8 million different combinations, and the same level of customization through the Sheets Brothers Coffee Bar with coffee, espressos, milkshakes, smoothies, and et cetera. The inside of our stores offer clean restrooms and seating where you can enjoy your meal with family and friends. The inside also hosts the technology to order that customized food I just talked about. Those touchscreens in the middle picture there is how you order those 1.8 million different combinations, and we take that same technology outside in our drive-thru convenience. When you pull up to the drive-thru, you simply roll down your window and touch on the screen what you want to order. And finally, you'll see an extension of our seating outside to enjoy that meal, and a high-quality building with full-section brick and stone, architecture, metals, glazing, and more. Our offer can quite simply be summarized in giving our customer what they want, when they want, and how they want it. Looking at some of the benefits of this project could bring include over $9 million in construction cost, much of which is spent on the local contractors, with all of the engineering work being completed by the local firms. You'll see increased property value and tax assessment on our parcel as well. Additionally, Sheets partners in the community in several different ways, which includes Sheets for the Kids, Made to Share, Special Olympics, local donations, and activities. And finally, we will offer 30 to 35 full-time jobs with awesome benefits and pay. We offer top-of-the-line benefits. As you can see, we have medical and dental, paid time off, parental leave, employee assistance program, 401K, quarterly bonus, tuition reimbursement, and food and drink discounts. To back that up, we are good employer. I'd like to share some of the awards we've won. You might recognize the Fortune 500 as being the 500 largest publicly traded companies in the country. Fortune also puts out a list of top 100 companies to work for. Sheets has been on that list for 10 running years. Additionally, when you break that list into categories like retail, Sheets become the second-best retailer in the entire country to work for, and we are very proud of that. Now getting into the project here, we are proposing a 2.34 developed acres, southwest corner of Ford and North Lot Roads, with a 6139 square feet restaurant and convenience store, eight fueling stations, and five EV chargers, which is 10 stations, and a convenience drive-thru. And on the next few slides, I would like to share the site plan and some of the elevations, what it could look like. So this is the site plan, and on the southern portion, you'll see the 10 parkings for the And this is the elevation what the building could look like. And this is a real-life picture of one of our stores. And then this is one of the buildings, also a real-life picture of one of our stores. And this is the EV charger, what it could look like. And lastly, another picture for our inside of the store where the seating is. With that, I'd like to call my colleague here, John Gaber, who's our land use attorney. He's gonna go over the rezoning criteria.
Thank you, Amon. My name is John Gaber. As you said, I'm the attorney for the applicants. My address is 380 North Old Woodward, Suite 300 in Birmingham. I know Patrick went over the criteria, the 10 criteria that we're supposed to look at for rezoning in detail, and, you know, one of the criteria is not what the end-use of this project is going to be. But we're excited to bring a Sheets to this location in Canton. We think it's a great fit for this area. We think it's certainly consistent with the character of the area, with what the area offers, and, you know, with, as Patrick mentioned, some of the criteria. It's consistent with the existing uses in the area, the commercial uses in the C-3 with the CBD overlay. It's consistent with the trends in the area, further development to this commercial, to the C-3. And it's consistent with your comprehensive plan in many ways. It's not only generally consistent in terms of looking at the future land use map, but there are actually policies, as Patrick mentioned, specific to this area in your comprehensive plan to provide for exactly what we're in front of you for today, is the recommendation for the rezoning to C-3 with the CBD overlay. There is precedent for this. Essentially, Patrick went over the access management standards and how we integrate with some of those. We have a TIS. The study is going to be reviewed, but the consultants have indicated that this site passes muster. And one thing you have to remember with this site, even though it's a mixed-use type of development, with the restaurant, with the convenience store, and with the, we call it a fuel station because, you know, sure, you've got pumps, but you're gonna have EV charging stations too. I mean, assuming, you know, that works out with DTE, but that's what we're proposing for this location. So with all these uses, it's more of a pass-by destination, or pardon me, a pass-by stop than it is a destination spot. So if you look at people who are on the road, obviously you know what a busy corridor this is. There's a lot of traffic, you know, township residents, people passing by, people coming from the interchange and such. And when they use these type of uses, they usually do it, like I said, as a pass-by use. They stop when they're already on their route to somewhere else. So it's not putting a lot of additional traffic on the road. What it's doing is it's providing an additional service and an amenity which this community can be proud of for people to use who are already on the road. So that's one of the benefits of, you know, this type of use in that particular area. So as Patrick mentioned, you know, we do believe that we satisfy all 10 of the criteria for rezoning in your ordinance, and we would respectfully request your positive recommendation this evening for the rezoning. And we're certainly here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, before we open the public hearing, I just want to remind everybody the role of the Planning Commission in a rezoning is to make a recommendation to the Township Board who make the final determination. And we do want to hear your feedback, but if you do have something to say about this development, we request that you keep it to three minutes or less. And also, if someone else has already made your point, we heard it, we are taking notes, we are listening. We also have some concerns about this project, and we, you know, we want to make sure that everybody stays on topic. It's already nine o'clock, it's after nine o'clock, so we have at least, we have one more public, one more rezoning request on our agenda after this one. So, this is just for the record, past my bedtime already. So if I yawn, please forgive me. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Ma'am Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee to open the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Awesome. Who would like to speak on the, certainly ma'am, please go to the mic. And as I mentioned last time, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dr. Catherine Gothard. I live at 40158 Warren Road. I've lived in Canton since 1989, so I've watched it grow. We purchased the home on Warren Road in 2020, and I'm concerned about the animals, I'm concerned about the traffic. I know that when we bought our home, it was built in 1919, and when we bought the home, it was during COVID, so it was, Warren Road was pretty quiet. We actually, when we moved here, Warren was dirt, a dirt road, and then now it's paved. What I'm concerned about is how the traffic will be increased on Warren Road, even though he's saying it's a, like, sort of a on-your-way type of facility. Most people didn't know where I lived until, you know, we said, hey, we're the big, huge house up on the hill with the big red barn, and everyone says, oh yeah, we take Warren to get to Sam's Club, we take Warren to get to Home Depot, we take Warren to get anywhere to avoid Ford Road. So I'm concerned that it is going to increase the traffic on Warren Road, it is going to increase where our animals don't have any place to go. We are, we're next to 20 acres on one side that can't be, Barbara Block owns that property, and it hasn't been able to be used, thankfully. But anyways, we have a lot of animals there on Warren Road, and I've actually been on Warren Road stopping traffic to let 75 turkeys cross. We have lots of deer in our meadows, we don't allow any hunting, Barbara does allow hunting on her property, and we have dead coyote, dead deer all the time on Warren Road. Someone mentioned at the other project, we, trying to pull in and out of our property on Warren Road is a disaster. So I know that the site is, you know, this is about your site, but I'm concerned about how it's going to increase the traffic on Warren Road and kill off any more, you know, wildlife that's there, and what that's know, wildlife that's there, and what that's going to do. I'm also concerned about the congestion. We already have, like I said, I've been here since 89, and I lived at Lily and Hanford. So we had Lily, and Ford is a disaster, Hagerty and Ford is a disaster. And with Top Golf coming in, I see this is going to be another disaster area. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Hassan Badun, 899 Burlington Road. I live right off of Cherry Hill and Lots. I actually take that road on a daily basis, and the traffic there is actually horrendous. You, three or four cycles of the light before you can get through it, and having this project is gonna make it even worse than what it is. I would respectfully ask, from the planning here tonight, that you either decline the request for a rezoning based on the proposed use, or restrict it and not allow that use, or submit an amendment to postpone your vote so that you have a better idea of the traffic study, and it's studied by way trim. And also, do we have any economic impact studies or any sustainability studies from this project? And thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Tom Hahn. I am at 45915 Gainesboro. And I'm not real close to this area, but just like anybody in Canton, you usually find yourself over there or whatever. And thank you for finally somebody answering for the animals, because our green is going away. And it sounds like all these criteria, one through 10, are, are meant to help big business. They have nothing to do, especially our last, the Everbrook. Everything has to do with more building, more building, more traffic, more problems. And I think what needs to maybe be looked into are these 10 criteria. Maybe we need to make them a little more harsh on big business so that we don't get, you know, God forbid, Canton needs another gas station, or, you know, a CVS, or whatever we have 25 of everywhere. And one last point, and I don't know if anybody knows this or keeps track of it, but we reached peak oil in the 70s. Oil is not the way of the world. It is right now because that's all we have. But when oil starts becoming very tough to get, which it is already, we don't see that because it's subsidized ridiculously. I saw, right now, gas, $2.95 a gallon. That's unbelievable. I know people look at it and think, oh, that's great, but in the long run, it is not. It is not a good thing when, when we have to start finding oil. We need to break ourselves of oil, so we do not need another gas station. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. Attorney Ali Barrow with the Barrow Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the Mino organization, which encumbers several residents of the Canton Township, along with several small business owners as well. I just wanna press on a few issues that were presented today, especially following the 10 criteria, and I would like to list several factors that are in opposition to supposedly Sheets qualifying under these 10 criterias, one of which, that I will discuss, is traffic. There's a huge traffic impact, which pursuant to the Canton Township Articles, Section 27.03(c)(4), the proposed use should not create excessive additional requirements at public cause for public facilities and services. What you have here is a proposal to carve out a road through these woodfields and then add a stoplight. And then there's also this mentioned by members of the Sheets who are proposing this, that this is just on their way. Well, this is being built off a 275, which I'm positive Sheets will put a billboard advertising that this is a gas station right off the highway, which will, of course, increase traffic flow. In addition to that, you have the public services and facilities concern under also Section 27.03(c)(3), which states in part, the proposal, the, requires that the proposed use will be adequately served by essential public facilities and services. Well, you have the increased traffic and demand on the infrastructure resulting from the gas station could strain already-existing public services such as road maintenance, traffic management, emergency vehicle responders. I mean, you're adding a whole, and if I just may say this, the average customer, amount of customers that come through a Sheet's gas station are 2,000 customers per day. Now, that's an insane amount of traffic to add to already congested road where you already have several people that are already complaining about the traffic roadways. In addition to that, there are several environmental concerns, which, again, Section 27.03(c)(5) states that the proposed use should not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, or equipment which will create a substantial negative impact on the natural environment. Gas stations carry an inherent risk. You have risks of soil and groundwater contamination, which could adversely affect the local ecosystems and residential wells. Now, these are just some concerns that we have as individuals, right? But then you also have the concern, and I know this was touched on by Mr. Sloan, and I, I wanna emphasize this because I don't believe that this is fair to the residents of the township as well. Pursuant to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, specifically MCL 125.3101 at sequence, and the public notice provision of the Canton Township Municipal Code, Article 27, the public has an interest in receiving accurate and complete notice regarding proposed rezoning of the property and township. I understand that the applicant's name is on there, but that's just not fair to the people. How are they gonna know that a Sheets gas station is opening up? I mean, you could put that McDonald's Inc. is opening up, but you're opening up-
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, I wanna gain clarity here. We're talking about rezoning, we're not talking about-
Correct.
-anything else, so it, it seems like we're getting ahead of the game.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder.
Good evening. 14A McDougall, Nasir Siddiqui, thank you for your service. One part of the criteria on the 10 Planning Commission is not how, what it does for the other businesses in the area. Another thing I wanted to mention, if Sheets was going to falsify their presentation, they should've just gone ahead and went to number one on Newsweek's number-one list, because they're actually number four, not number two. That's a simple Google search you can look up, and the way to get on Newsweek's top-two retailer list is you simply purchase to be on the list. Simple survey is done-
But we're talking about the rezoning, not the-
I have three minutes to speak.
You, we're talking about the rezoning.
Ten criterias. Building on Ford and Beck was rejected because it did not fit into the 10 criterias. But however, this fits into the 10 criterias. Well, the criteria number six, well, the amendment said an inappropriate precedence resulting in need to correctly future planning mistakes. Ten years ago, every corner wanted a CVS, Walgreens, and a Rite Aid. Here we are 10 year later. No, they're all extinct, they're all pharmacy deserts. We're building another gas station. You know where the gas is going? The gentleman here mentioned, all the oil is going away. Yet we're exchanging five EV charging stations for how many different underground more tanks, for eight more pumps. Maybe one of the Planning Commission's criteria should be, let's use our common sense. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Teddy Gannite. I live at 39585 Lotzford, behind the Home Depot. And a lot of the situations they're talking about is true, the animals, but forget the animals. What about the kids? What's gonna stop the semis from coming out and going down Lots Road? And the children are waiting out there for the buses. These guys are tired in the morning, they're gonna stop, like they see that sign on the freeway. There's one on 94 that says Sheets is out there. We already have one there. We have truck stops down on Michigan Avenue and 275, and they got problems with prostitution. They got problem, it's a 24-hour thing that's gonna be down here. Are they selling alcohol? Are the, the trucks gonna be permitted to park overnight? I say you call the man out. He said he'd respect your decision, whatever you say. So tell him no. Tell him we don't want a gas station. These people don't want a gas station. Just tell him no. It's really that simple. Tell him no. He said he'd respect, he said he'd respect your decision. Let's see if the man's honest enough to do that.
Thank you.
By the way, all these people, this is a rubber stamp. These people are gonna approve this-
Sir, excuse me.
Hey, I got my three minutes. I'm gonna tell them what's going on here.
You're off-topic. You're off-topic, sir.
Okay. It's, it's-
On topic.
It's a rubber stamp. They're gonna approve this, just like they approved this rezoning on my property against everybody's wishes. They're gonna do that because they have no recourse. They're appointed by the supervisor there, sir, assistant over there, try to talk to Ann Marie. I've been trying to talk to her since April 24th.
We're here to discuss the rezoning of this property, sir.
I know, and you can't talk to these people. I'd like to talk to you. I'd like to make an appointment to see you about my flooding situation.
Sir, this is about the rezoning at Ford and, and Ford and Lots Road. Please, please-
Other guy wouldn't even look you in the eye. He's giving you this presentation, it's been all of you.
Sir, I explained why he was looking at me.
People won't look you in the eye. Watch what you're doing.
Is his time up yet?
Yeah. Don't look down at me on your computers.
Thank you for leaving, sir. Thank you. Thank you for leaving. Thank you. Yeah.
So one thing I wanted to-
Sir, excuse us, we have a meeting to conduct here, and you're, you're interrupting it. Patrick, please, please speak.
So, so before proceeding to, to the next member of the public, I did wanna note that, and I mentioned this during the previous application, so I wanna mention it here, is-
Are we still in the public hearing, or?
We are. I, I just wanted to clarify one thing about the application itself, that if there is a future application for a gas station through a planned development district, planned development district applications, PDD applications, they do require public hearings, they do require open meetings. So if there's a future application for a gas station, they will be required to submit an application. A public hearing will be required, it'll be mailed out, noticed in the newspaper, so if there's a future application for that use, there will be another public hearing at that time for a development proposal.
Thank you.
That was just, just to clarify, I know we're still in public hearing.
Yeah. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't already spoken? Sir, please. Just know that if you, if you call us names, that doesn't help your case. Not that you're planning to, but.
Rocky Aldo, 8773 North Hagerty Road. I'm in the gas station business. Longtime supporter, multi-property in Canton, kinda grew up there since I was a kid. The only thing I have to say, and I understand this is a, a proposal to rezoning, and I respect that, but I would like to say something. Just a couple of things about the site. Just keep in mind that this is a big company, and they have a right to go anywhere they like and make money like every other business, and that's what supports the economy. But Sheets has been denied at every suburban city in Michigan right now. There's a reason for that. That's the reason why I believe they don't wanna put their name, and I'm not saying that's why, but that would be the reason. So they're squeezing themselves in locations. They want 60 or 70 locations in the state of Michigan. That's squeezing yourself in. They're not on the way. There's two gas stations on the way that serve 275 and two other, from the other side. So I just wanted to clarify that for future proposal of a gas station. It creates, you know, maybe blightness to other gas stations in the community if they can't survive against another gas station. They're squeezing themselves. Lots is not a proper corner. I mean, it's a corner. It's made for residents, it's made for a big community, not a four-way corner for a gas station. Just wanted to bring that up. Thank you for allowing me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just while this gentleman's making, making his way to the podium, I just wanna mention that we did get several letters from members of the public, both pro and con. We got, I counted 15 in favor and five, or, I'm sorry, 15 opposed and five in favor, which is kind of unusual. We usually get opposition only, so, thank you.
My name is Nick. I own a mobile gas station.
Nick, two things-
Could you step up to the mic, man?
Yeah, please use your last, give us your last name as well.
Nick Neber. I own a gas station located on 7230 North Sheldon Road. A lot of points have already been mentioned, so I'm not gonna repeat myself. My one suggestion is, I suggest that any type of traffic study that needs to get conducted should be held off until the other approved businesses are going on in that corner, take place, and see what kind of effect it does, it causes at intersection before we go and move forward. So whatever traffic study you guys will provide with, at this point, honestly, I think it's kinda useless. So I should, I think we should hold off, wait until the golf location, I believe Chick-fil-A is also coming in that corner and multiple other businesses. I believe we should hold off until those two businesses that are already approved are up, running, operational, along with a lot of the housings. I believe there's some bunch of housings that got approved on Lots Road, so there's a lot going on. So any type of traffic study that's gonna get conducted at this point, I believe it's gonna be useless. And one more quick thing is, with introduction of BJ, a lot of us here that own businesses are still recovering from that hit. You know?
I'm sorry, could you clarify what you mean by that? You mean that BJ's gas station coming in?
BJ's gas station.
Okay.
I am a sole gas station, and I'm down about 30,000 gallons per month. That is over $15,000 per month. With introduction of B, Sheets, obviously, the gas, you know, these guys operate at a, at a million gallon a month. You know, they're not gonna pull it just off the freeway, they're gonna pull it from every single small business in this area. That's one. Two, the only reason we're able to survive BJ right now is the fact that we offer a convenience store. You know, we're able to compensate with gas sales, maybe, you know, pushing and improving our C-stores, compensate for the gas loss. With them bringing in a massive C-store with massive restaurants and all whatnot, it's just gonna make it much harder for us to be able to survive. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, move to close the public hearing. Support.
We have a motion and support to close the public hearing. I'm sorry, ma'am, you did, you, you had an opportunity to speak, so. You had an opportunity to speak, so we're gonna close the public hearing. We have a motion and support, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Janowski to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Janowski this time. Lucky you.
Did you want?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. I need help after my bedtime, really.
Okay, we, we can certainly appreciate that. Thank you. John, again, on behalf of the applicants. Couple of points I wanted to make with regard to, to Sheets. I mean, this, this is, I don't know if you've been there or not, but this is more than just a gas station. It has EV chargers, it has food, made-to-order food, convenience store, it's, it's, it's quite extensive in terms of the offerings. It really is a mixed-use type of development. With respect to the-
You had a chance to speak, sir.
Please, please, please respect the speaker and the, and the process and the, and the commission.
With respect to the other gas station owners, we certainly understand and appreciate where they're coming from. You know, competition is the lifeblood of our system, our free enterprise system. Competition sometimes is beneficial. We've noticed in some of our locations that us coming in forces the competition to upgrade and improve, to be able to compete with Sheets. So this is a consideration as well. One thing about Sheets that, that you should remember, too, I know the, one of the gentlemen came up and said, well, Sheets is denied everywhere. Sheets is not denied everywhere. That's what the press picks up, because it's controversial, that's what they feed on. But essentially, I wanna make two points here. The first is, if you look at Chesterfield Township, Sheets was approved. McComb Township, Sheets was approved. Taylor, Sheets was approved. Fraser, Sheets was approved. Orion Township, Sheets was approved. So there's a trend for approval, but you don't see that reported on, because that's not sexy, that's not controversial. So you don't see that in the newspaper, and you don't focus on that. And in those areas where, you know, we've had difficulty getting approval, a lot of the feedback from the boards have been, you know, we love Sheets, we think this is a great concept, just not in this particular location. But they like the concept and they like Sheets. So I ask you to please approach us with an open mind if and when it gets to that stage. With respect to the rezoning here, the property owner has the right to develop their site. Obviously, they're gonna, there's gonna be, you develop it with anything, there's gonna be some traffic. And the TIS is gonna be looked at by, you know, there are two different road jurisdictions here. As you know, the MDOT and Wayne County are both going to look at this. But in essence, the property owner- But in essence, the property owner does have the right to develop. This fits within the rezoning criteria. And the rezoning criteria, I want to mention to certain people as well, those criteria are criteria that are used all over the place. And a lot of those criteria, if you look at consistency with the master plan, for example, the master plan process is something that the community goes through every five years. And to do that, they solicit a lot of public input from their community. And the public is who comments on this. Those comments and that feedback go into the master plan in terms of making these determinations. And the last master plan made the determination that this area should be commercial. And that's all we're asking for this evening, is that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. We are currently going through our master planning process. The master plan is available for public comment right now. If you want to go to the website and make comments, you are more than welcome. And I also wanted to mention, we had quite a discussion, as Patrick, I think Patrick alluded to this earlier, about traffic at our last hearing, which was last week, regarding the development at Top Golf. And I welcome your going and watching that because there was some interesting conversation about the process of actually working with the county and the state to get traffic improvements made, and it's frustrating to all of us. With that, Patrick, did you have any responses to anything in particular that anyone said?
As I had previously noted, a lot of them are development-related and things that we would address in more detail if and when there's a development application for a PDD. We went a little bit more in-depth with the previous application because there were full-site plans submitted where we had something more tangible. In this case, there's the layout plan, which is helpful, but there's a lot of steps to go before they're even eligible for that particular use. And the big step is a PDD application where we'd have a public hearing, much more detailed plans, more analysis on the traffic study. So, we'll defer a lot of our comments to that point, and we will have a lot of comments about that when we get into the use. The only thing I wanted to follow up on some of the comments are that, one of the comments had cited several subsections of Section 27.03(c). Those are standards of special land use review, and special land use review is not what we're here for. It's the rezoning. And if there's a PDD review, there's a separate set of standards in the PDD. They're very similar to the special land use standards of Section 27.03(c), but they're in a different section of the zoning ordinance that would be applicable to that specific development. So, I just wanted to clarify. They're good standards. Many of them are applicable, though, to the PDD, which is a development application, same as a special use.
Thank you. Okay. Very good. I'm going to go to the commission and see what Commissioner Janowski has to say.
Thank you, Don. Once again, I know we're, I'm going to base my intent on, I don't know if this lot's going to be Sheets or if it's going to be this or that. I have no idea of that right now. I don't know why this, we're getting the cart before the horse. So, is this land that we're looking at, can it be rezoned C-3 or should it be? Yes, it should. And I don't know, I'm kind of leaving this other stuff out of my mind. One thing I will do, though, when I look at the traffic study, you look at the grades, everything that's going on, where in prior usage, there was talks about studies that included programming lights, which actually made this, made everything a lot better so that that development met the criteria. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lee?
Yes. Let me say that I think competition is good. I've gone to BJ's and it's been so crowded, I've actually gone to a gas station because it's less crowded. So, I think this all can work together in my mind. The thing I got on traffic, though, is my issue, is that I'm trying to look at it from a positive standpoint. We got all these developments. I'm looking at this, when I'm looking down, I'm not looking at you, I'm looking at a drawing of the area. And I'm looking at all these developments coming in along with this one. And we probably will need three lights if all of this hits at about the same time, going between the freeway and lots. The other thing we don't have is we have not committed to a boulevard west of, or east of, what am I thinking? Hagerty. And I'm thinking, with all these developments, you guys should just team up and just go to the state and the county and actually work on creating a solution for all of this all at the same time. Because they got to see what we're seeing. You cannot wait till all of this goes into place, which is what they're telling us, and they see a problem and then try to solve it. We need to solve it now, and we're planners, so let's plan it out. So, go to the state and the county together, I think, and talk about all this stuff that's going in on this corner if we, we're just approving zoning now, but I'm thinking in the future, no matter what the use is, it's still going to be commercial if we go through what we're doing now. Doesn't matter if it's Sheets, but that would be good if y'all went to the state and really pulled some political power and tried to get this stuff done. I'm saying we should even have a boulevard all the way to the, a turn at Walmart is where I'm at. I've been saying that for a long time, but maybe this is a way that we can maybe get the state to listen and the feds to maybe put some money into it because it is a federal way there, too. I'm just looking at ways this can make this happen. Anyway, I'm going to tell you one thing that I see, and this is personal. I probably would avoid leaving, turning on lots. I would go through the parking lot and turn where a signal is at Walmart. That's how I would handle my, that's how I drive it because I know about Canton. I would do it that way. So, anyway, I'm sorry?
Please respect the process.
Oh, I know it is. I'm saying for, no, no. I'm saying, that's me.
Please respect the process and the fact that the public hearing is closed.
I will respect the process, but you're right. But I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to look at it from a positive sense. We cannot deny a developer something that he has the right to do, which is develop their land. But I'm trying to strike it as a way to, and they are, they're allowed to develop their land. So, I just see it as a way that we may be turning it into something positive that can get this thing going. That's all I got. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster?
Thank you. I will say again to everyone who came out and spoke tonight, thank you for coming. Thank you to everyone who was, you know, respectful of the process and listening to the Planning Commission and willing to hear the feedback, knowing this is the first step of what is going to be a long process. And I know that you had a question that you did not get a chance to answer. I will say, no matter what happens here tonight, this is going to go before the township board, so I would urge you to ask your question before the township board, whether this is approved or not approved. So, just wanted to make that point to you. Since I've been on the township board and since I've been a part of the Planning Commission, we've had a lot of conversations about rezoning this to C-3, getting rid of the corporate park overlay, and it is something that a lot of us have seen the need to do for a while. So, I am in favor of the rezoning. I think that we do a disservice to the community by not allowing certain developments past Hagerty on Ford Road. I think we, the result of that has been a lot of congestion west on Ford Road where maybe we can take some of that congestion to the east side of 275. And so, that's where my head is on that. But I will say this, we are deciding on the rezoning tonight. We are not deciding on Sheets. I'm not 100% committed to Sheets. I need to learn more. I need to know the traffic studies. I have concerns about the hours of operation, but right now, I am in favor of the rezoning.
Thank you.
So, I would echo Commissioner Foster's comments about thanking everyone for coming out and making comments. That's an important part of the process. And as Chairman Zubor mentioned, please take advantage of looking at the master plan that's on the website right now and make your comments known about that as well. That's also an important part of the process. That being said, I'm going to echo what Commissioner Janowski said at the outset. I'm not, I'm not giving you a comment on the potential use tonight other than, other than talking about traffic. We're here to talk about the rezoning. I would repeat what Commissioner Lee said also about Ford Road and the proposed boulevard project. I think, I think that needs to go much further than what it's currently planned. I would emphasize, all of you folks, to go to your state reps and pound on them to get them to reconsider the development of that plan and how it's going to impact Canton because the way it's, in my mind, the way it's designed right now, it's not going to do what it's intended to do. But that's another subject for a different day. As far as the rezoning goes, I do agree that this property needs to go to C-3, consistent with the other development in the area. I'm indifferent right now about the use just because I don't know enough about it yet, but that's kind of where my head is right now. And as most developments in this township, but traffic is an issue, it seems like no matter where we go in the township. So, it's important to have that conversation, whether it's this development or any development in Canton. And unfortunately, our hands are tied a lot of times, but you folks making, being the squeaky wheel a lot of times, maybe some things can get moving about those issues. Thank you.
Mr. Eckenberger?
Thank you. I believe with, I agree with what the commissioners have said previously on this. We are just talking about rezoning, but I feel the same way I did about the, what we just talked about before. I have grave concerns about traffic in this area, and that's something that I think I'll have a big conversation, whatever company tries to come in on this corner.
Commissioner Singh?
No comments.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Watkins?
I'll be brief. So, really quickly, I'll, look, I'm an old, a kid developer guy. I just care about the real estate. So, Sheets representatives, do you have a letter of holding or site control of the site currently?
We do not own the site, but we are in contract.
Got it. All right. So, again, it's clear that the zoning is something that's appropriate at this point, but like I told everybody else a few minutes ago or hours ago, right?
Hours.
Hours ago.
Multiple hours.
You got a lot of questions to answer, and I will say this, kudos to your site selectors all across the country. You guys are very aggressive in your approach. Your marketing is very, I'm going to put it straightforward. So, I think some people are happy to see you and the other half are not going to be happy to see you. But, but be reminded, when you come with a development plan, you're going to have a lot of questions to answer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I have to echo what the other commissioners have said. I appreciate everybody's feedback and comments. We have a process that we go through. We have criteria that we need to consider, and I agree that the site does make sense to be a C-3 zoning. So, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll take the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And I think my computer went to sleep on me. How about that? It's back. I moved the recommend approval of the request and planning application number 049, tech RZ, tech 8509, to rezon four parcels, parcels number 049, tech 99, tech 0011-701, 049, tech 99, tech 0011-702, 04999, tech 0016, tech 002, and 049, tech 99, tech 0016, tech 005. From MRD, Midrise Development and Corporate Park Overlay District to C-3, Regional Commercial District and CBD, Central Business District Overlay, as the proposal meets the standards of Section 27.06d4 of the zoning ordinance as stated in the staff report, based on the following findings. One, the proposed C-3 zoning district and CBD overlay are in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two, conditions have changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted, and the proposed rezoning to C-3 and CBD overlay will not grant special privileges. Three, the zoning amendment will not result in unlawful exclusionary zoning and will not set an inappropriate precedent. Four, the proposed C-3 zoning district and CBD overlay are consistent with the existing land uses of surrounding property and are consistent with the trends in land development in the general vicinity of the properties. Five, compliance with the standards of the C-3 zoning district and the CBD overlay are attainable would not result in additional non-conformity. And finally, six, the proposed C-6 zoning district and CBD overlay by themselves do not result in negative impacts on the township infrastructure with a final determination to be made during development application review. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Eckenberger, could you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Eckenberger. Yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zubor?
Yes. Motion carries. So, Patrick, next steps, please.
Sure. The next steps will be, the recommendation will proceed forward to the Township Board of Trustees for action. That'll be on an upcoming board agenda. I'm not sure which one, but for those following, please watch the upcoming agendas to see when it's on the agenda. Those meetings also have public comment periods as well at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items. And because it's a rezoning application, it's an ordinance amendment application, it requires two readings from the Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. The next item on our agenda is item 049-RZ-8510, SRB Servicing LLC and Canton Oaks rezoning, where we're considering rezoning for several parcels on North Lots Road. The parcels are located on the west side of Lots Road between Ford Road and Cherry Hill. Proposed rezoning from MRD, Midrise Development District and Corporate Park Overlay District to MRD, Midrise Development District without the Corporate Park Overlay District. Patrick, tell us more.
Sure. Thank you. The rezoning proposal, this application is, there are four parcels located on the site outlined on the aerial map on the screen. The proposal is to rezone the property simply by removing the Corporate Park Overlay District. Right now, the Midrise Development District is the underlying zoning district, the MRD. The proposal is to retain that underlying zoning district but to remove that Corporate Park Overlay District. And as noted in the previous application, the Corporate Park Overlay District has a lot of development challenges. Every development in that district is a special land use, so development is very difficult to obtain in the Corporate Park Overlay District. The proposal is to develop 280-unit multifamily residential project that will include a mix of adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, or ADD, as well as neurotypical residents. And the proposal for the development, which would come forward in likely a PDD application, is a mixed, mix of residents within the multifamily residential development. The conceptual development plan with the application shows 280 units on almost 25 acres, which is a density of 11.3 units per acre, which is less than the 12 units per acre maximum for multifamily uses in a PDD. The layout plan shows 20 buildings, 14 units each. Multifamily residential uses are special land uses in the MRD zoning district and are subject to development standards within the zoning ordinance. The layout plan shows two points of access from Lots Road. Our understanding is that fire code requires two points of access. During a future PDD review, we may recommend converting one of the access points to emergency access only. There are some floodplain areas on the north side of the site and several wetland areas. In the layout plan, the site is designed to minimize the impacts on these natural feature areas, but it does seek some modifications from the 25-foot setback of the wetland areas. The development proposes a stub road on the west side to provide access to the parcel to the west, which is landlocked. The concept plan shows 72% open space, and it shows a proposed layout for stormwater management. With regard to the master plan, the Lots Road corridor planned south of Willow Creek Drain, it's recommended in the master plan to be either R6, single-family attached, O1 office, or MRD, mid-rise zoning. So, the current underlying zoning of MRD is consistent with the master current underlying zoning of MRD is consistent with the master plan, but the master plan recommends removal of the Corporate Park Overlay, which this application would do. The layout plan indicates compliance with the underlying MRD standards with exception of some of the setbacks due to some of the natural features. Recently, the applicant has submitted a PDD application for proposed development of what's included in the packet as the concept layout plan. There are some modifications that are proposed in that PDD application for natural feature setback. Because of the presence of wetlands, it's very difficult to do any kind of development without either encroaching into a wetland, which is regulated, or to do something even grading within the 25-foot wetland setback. So that's something that we'll discuss more during the PDD application. Looking at the roads and traffic impact, there is a traffic impact study that's been submitted by Colliers Engineering and Design. It recommends signal timing adjustments at Ford and Lots and at Cherry Hill and Lots. Right now, we can't make affirmative findings on that traffic study until it's been reviewed by Canton's traffic engineering consultant. So at the point of PDD review, more will come before the planning commission on that. For the water and sewer, on the east side of Lots Road, south of Willow Creek, there's currently a pump station for sewer that's under construction that will serve the springs at Willow Creek on the east side of the road. However, that pump station is proposed to service greater area, generally south of Willow Creek and north of ITC. So this particular site is going to be opened up even more for development potential once that pump station comes online. The pump station district, as well as the pump station itself, is designed to handle more capacity than just springs at Willow Creek. That pump station was designed with the region in mind, that area that I described, in order to provide future sanitary sewer service. So a pump station, once it's developed and it's online, it becomes much more feasible for this proposed development application to move forward. I've gone through the proposed development criteria, or the standards of review in our letter for the 10 rezoning standards. We find that all 10 standards are met. We've highlighted those in our report. I've covered some of those in my presentation just now. And we've gone through them a couple of times tonight, so we all know which 10 they are, and they're in the written report. So in this verbal report, I just covered the highlights. So with that, our recommendation for the proposed rezoning to remove the Corporate Park Overlay District from the site, we recommend approval of that application. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. And if anyone needs a refresher, I'm happy to read those, too. The 10 criteria.
Not tonight.
Yeah, exactly. No, thank you. Okay, project sponsor here?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Michael. I'm with Three Oaks Communities. Our office is at 14496 North Sheldon Road, Suite 230, Plymouth. Thank you tonight for, thank you for serving our community. You guys actually go out and spend, I don't know how many nights a month, but God love you. We are a developer that does something, as far as we can tell, the only developer in the United States that does it. We develop for sale residential communities that include somewhere between 25 and 40% of the units are housing for adults with developmental disabilities such as autism or Down Syndrome. We did our first project, we started our first project in, starting in 2016 down in Celine. When we did that project, we did a, we had a groundbreaking on it, and National Public Radio came by and did a story on us and one of our customers. Since then, we've received calls from groups of families in 30 different states in the U.S. and are presently pursuing our platform in several other states besides Michigan. We're currently underway with two projects in Rochester Hills that are similar to what we would be proposing here. We have been working with a group of families here that's called, got to look up their name, Compass Community Collaborative. It's a group of families that are located in Plymouth and Northville area. We've had several meetings with them, and they are presently, I think we got about 35 commitments from them. We suspect we'll have 50 or 60 at the end. The other thing I'll mention very briefly is that we do a integrated community that includes neurotypical people as well as the developmentally disabled. That's on purpose, but for a lot of reasons. Some of them are having to do with Medicaid funding that's administered by the counties. They don't want to see too big a concentration of disabled people in one spot. The families themselves want to see their children actually grow up in a, or live in a community that has folks that they can actually learn from in terms of being able to get by and live as independent a life as possible. And finally, we actually offer those units at pretty close to cost, and so we actually make the project work with the neurotypical sales. We have not had issues with neurotypical sales in any of our developments. We are, for instance, in Rochester Hills right now, one of our projects has million-dollar homes next to the ADD housing. We've already sold four of the eight lots that are remaining. We haven't even finished land development yet. So we found that this seems to work, and I can tell you that I've watched personally many parents that actually breathe a sigh of relief because they all wonder, what happens? Does I get too old to be able to care for my kid, or I die? What happens to them? There are very few housing alternatives for them. Most of them are pretty bad. This is one that seems to work. It's not the whole picture, but it's a, it's one solution that seems to be working for a number of the families. With that, I know we're late. I don't want to take any more of your time, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Open the public hearing.
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Singh to open the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Public hearing is open. Anyone in the audience want to speak? Mr. McCoslin?
Wait a minute. You weren't going to speak about the last thing?
Yeah, really.
Hey.
I recognize your signature.
I didn't want to start a rumble in the room, okay? But this just shows right here what the gentleman said. The newspaper can really get this ginned up, right? We're going to have a large development, and the room's empty, right? We're going to put a, we're going to put a, a nice place on the corner. But here's what I want to say. Let's, let's leave that for another day. It's a great idea. This is a good idea. As a guy who provides a group home in Canton for the last 23 years, you'd never know where it's at. Been here for 23 years. I own it, right? You do it because you want to help those people, right? Just like he said, want to know where their family wants to know where they're going to be, their, their watch 24/7. It gives them a sense of community, gives them a sense to walk to the sheets, to get, to get something to eat, to give them some, you know, have a way to fit in the community. This is great. This is absolutely great. It's perfect, right? But don't, don't let that other crowd sway this crowd, right? Because this whole corridor is changing. Remember I said a couple of years ago? Once, once the synergy starts, it's going to be hard to stop the synergy. So here we are. We're here at the synergy, right? So I'm all for it. It's great.
Thank you. Mr. McCoslin?
Bob McCoslin, 2011 Lots Road. You know, I think it's a fantastic idea. Me and my brother, like I said, been involved in it our whole lives. You got to get back, got to get back to the community. And there's, there's just too many people that are left out. And the gentleman has excellent idea. And I read on it and took practice from it. I think it's, it's a perfect spot. It's just so perfect. We got the trail. We got a lot of, a lot of things that could be done there. You know, it's, it's going to be unique. It's going to be a one-of-a-kind place. These guys didn't come back after they had thrown out because there was nowhere else to go. They want to come here. They like the idea. And I think you'd see people working in their stores and everything else. I can't speak for them on that, but we've been to other places, and it's, it's really something to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. The W's have it to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. Developer, would you like to, I'm sorry, I did not jot your name down.
It's better than I've called it a lot about with public hearings.
Would you like to address any of the comments that were made about your project?
All I can just say is that I've been in, I've been with parents that just start crying because it just takes a load off their, off their shoulders. And again, it's not, it's not, it's not the only solution, but this one is working. And we think the ownership piece of it is so critical because all our parents say, oh, my gosh, my forever home for my child. They can never get kicked out. It can never get shut down. And we set up a long-term operation for them with a nonprofit and the HOA to make sure that all of the services that they need are there. And they don't, and they don't end up with, you know, again, something falls apart on them. Parents are very involved, very paid-for group of people, always helping each other, lots of great ideas. We get the parents actively involved in the whole process of deciding some details that they need, like the common space that's in their building, how do they want that to appear, what do they want, what do they want for their group of kids. They get involved with security, decisions on how security is handled because we have a, they're all electronically controlled, the access points in the building, separating floors from each other. And we have integrated buildings, we'll have the ADD on one floor and neurotypical on another floor. And we're also excited because this is, this introduces some housing into the Plymouth-Canton market that, you know, you can buy a closet over here for $500,000 at this point. So we're going to be able to allow some people to get in that market, I think, that couldn't, because our pricing's going to be probably starting in the, just below 300 to just below 400 range. Other than that, I could go on all night. You guys need to go home.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Open questions?
Yeah.
Oh. Question. You said you're dealing with autism. At what's, I'm trying to get at what level? Are they functional? Are they non-functional? Or what?
What happens is, is we spend a lot of time, we actually have an element of our, of our company that does nothing but do what we call matchmaking. So we make sure that these groups of families, one, the parents get along, the kids get along, and they have like amounts of, of any, you know, say any, say we have a floor in a building that's got seven units in it, that the, the people that go into those units have similar disability levels. So that in each one of them, they have what's called an IPAS, Independent Plan of Service, that they sit down with the county and they decide how much they'll fund of that in terms of caregiving. And so we try to go ahead and put like groups of people together in terms of their disabilities, but also the chemistry is really important because even though they live in separate dwelling units, are on the same floor, they're going to see each other a lot, there's a lot of care that goes into that piece of the equation.
Are they also for purchase? Then these are?
They're all only for purchase. Everything is an ownership.
So you're buying this unit for your child?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Vote of the Commission. So let's start with Commissioner Watkins this time.
Certainly. I'll keep it brief. Yes, no problem with the zoning. And this is, it's, it's home for me. I have an adult daughter who's, has intellectual disabilities, has an IPOs with Wayne County Integrated Health. And there's literally no place for her to, to live on her own as a, as a grown-up. So Bruce and I will talk one day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just have a question. Once these houses are sold, who manages the facility?
It, they're more like-
So what happens is there's an HOA.
Is it, is it more of a condo than a single family?
It's a condominium. So it's, there's a, there's a condominium owners association. It'll be professionally managed. The parents actually sit on the board as part of the board. We usually have one association just for paperwork simplicity, but two different groups of budgets because the services being provided for the ADD is greater than it is for the neurotypical public. And of course, the neurotypical public shouldn't have to pay for that. So there's, there's, in addition to that, there's a, what's called a community builder. We have a community builder that's a professionally trained individual that I'll call the den mother. The person that's not the caregiver, but can be a stand-in for a caregiver and does all of the arranging of making sure that every one of these people get to all the different activities they might be involved in. They might, they might be anywhere from a part-time job or college or going for training or any number of other things that they can do. And that, and those people are critical, we've found, to actually making that cohesive community and work. And they're a backstop for when a caregiver can't show up because they're sick or something like that. And they're, they're built into the HOA budget, and they're there long-term. Usually, we provide them a unit on the property so they can be there full-time. And their concern is just that. And then beyond that, you have the regular HOA management functions, you know, taking care of the buildings, the lawns, the snow plowing, et cetera.
Mr. Eickenberger.
It sounds like a great program. And I'm thrilled that it's going to be a part of Canton. Well, maybe I'm speaking too soon. I'm thrilled that we're on our way.
Step one. Mr. Weber?
I don't have any other comments, Madam Chairman, other than to say that good luck in further development of this project. It's, sounds very positive.
Thank you.
Mr. Foster?
I agree wholeheartedly with my other, my fellow commissioners. No questions. This sounds like a wonderful project. Thank you.
And Commissioner Lee?
The only thing I want to add is I think I've heard from the community that there are traffic issues on Lots.
Wait. What?
There are. Now, I know this probably won't impact you because you may have a different schedule of people leaving, but the idea of walking to a convenience store or something would be a good stimulation for that group, I'm sure. But I know that there, and it's been mentioned, that Lots has issues. So I just want to highlight, I don't know if it'll affect you. Do you have any comment on that?
I would have hoped that what we can all do is, I've done this with some other things in other places, is all the developers that are actively involved getting together and figuring out, I think it was you, I can't remember who said, hey, let's get them all together and let's all go to MDOT-
I wish you would do that.
-County, everybody, and let's go work together and see what we can get done instead of us individually, you know.
That's the play, right there. Thank you.
It's a great idea. Let's do it.
Yeah, it is. Commissioner Janowski?
I really like the idea. This is actually something I'm excited to see. So even though I, I don't know it's, it's coming, I'm looking at the rezoning right now. So, thank you.
You're supposed to be looking at the U.S.
Yes.
I'm just looking at rezoning right now.
Yes. Yeah. Well, I, I echo what, what the other commissioners have said. I think this sounds like a wonderful project, and I, I hope it succeeds, and I wish you the best. And yeah, we're excited to have you, provided we can manage the traffic, of course. So anyone want to, I'm entertaining motions.
And before we do, in the model motion, there is a, there is a typo in number two, very top of page seven. There's a reference to rezoning to C3 and CBD overlay. In the model motion, I would, I would propose striking that and replacing the text of rezoning to C3 and CBD overlay to quote-unquote MRD zoning.
MRD.
Okay. Excellent.
I, I will support this motion.
Commissioner Janowski, please.
I move to recommend the approval of the request, the planning application number 049-RZ-8510 to rezone four parcels, parcel number 49-99-004-000, 49-99-007-000, 49-99-008-000, and 49-99-0009-000 from MRD Midrise Development District and Corporate Park Overlay to MRD Midrise Development District without the corporate overlay. As the proposal meets the standards of section 27.06D4 of the zoning ordinance as stated in the staff report based upon the following findings. One, the proposed MRD zoning district is in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and is consistent with the comprehensive One, the proposed MRD zoning district is in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Number two, conditions have changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted and proposed rezoning to MRD and will not grant special privileges. The zoning amendment, three, the zoning amendment will not result in unlawful exclusionary zoning and will not set an appropriate precedent. Number four, the proposed MRD zoning district is consistent with the existing land use of surrounding property and is inconsistent with the trends in land development in the general vicinity of the properties. Number five, compliance with the standard of the MRD zoning district is attainable. And, number six, the proposed MRD by itself does not result in negative impacts on the township infrastructure with a final determination to be made during development application review.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Janowski and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the vote? Sure. Excuse me, Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And chairperson, Zuber? Yes. So motion carries, good luck. Thank you, yes. And Patrick, next steps are the Township Board, I'm going to guess.
Yes, it'll go to the board at the next available meeting. We'll be in touch with the applicant on that once it's ready, and that'll be on a future board agenda.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right. Item, the next item on our agenda is our 2024 Annual Report and 2025 Work Plan. Aaron?
Hello.
Is that you?
It is.
Awesome. Are you still with us?
I have a very long presentation ready for you all this evening. So included in your packet was the 2024 Annual Planning Commission Activity Report and the 2025 Work Plan. As you know, this is required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act in order for the Planning Commission to make an annual written report to the Township Board concerning all its planning activities, operations, status of things, and recommendations that they've done therein. Included in this, we also do a work plan for the coming year so that way we can showcase what tasks Planning Services Division wants to tackle and prepare you all for the inevitable workload that you're going to have outside of the site plan, special land use rezonings that are applicant-driven. So you can go through it. We have 10 items on the work plan that we want to accomplish this year or at least make great strides in. The number one being the master plan, which, as you've mentioned a couple of times before, is out for public comment, and we hope to have adopted early this year. From that, there will be a lot of zoning ordinance amendments, and we have a number of them listed out that we want to tackle this year, as well as some sub-area or specialty plans that we won't be able to complete this year, but we might be able to set a coursework or a framework or a guiding network for how we want to tackle those in the future and which ones are the highest priority. So I'm not going to believe this anymore, but if you have any questions or want to discuss anything in more detail, please, I'm here to answer any questions.
Wow, that was really long. Aaron, could you try to keep it shorter next time?
Madam?
Jeez.
I do have a question. Our continuing ed? I did two hours, okay? I want to take credit for that. I think I sent you. Okay? Is that something, do we have to do, what is it, six hours?
It's six hours per term or two hours per year.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be, like, for instance, if you miss a year or miss an hour for your continuing ed and you just make it up in the next year. So as long as there's six hours per term, you're set.
I love the links, thank you.
Yes, and I will continue to send those as they become available so that way we're not trying to squash them all in the last two to three weeks of the year, so.
Yeah, because we're busy with getting our professional continuing ed in the last, you know, two, three weeks of the year. Okay, next item on the agenda.
We need a recommendation, this needs to go to the Township Board.
Oh, sorry.
So a recommendation for approval from the Township Board. I don't have a model motion for you, I apologize.
I move to recommend approval of the 2025 Work Plan.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Foster and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? Next time, provide a model motion.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Oh, could you please talk about? I don't know, do we call the roll on this one? Okie dokie. Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And chairperson, Zuber? Yes, please. Motion carries, excellent. Please, take that to the Township Board with our compliments. Okay.
Is that it?
No. No, we have to elect, we have to elect officers. We have to elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary for this year. Floor is open for nominations.
Madam Chair, if we're willing to do so, I would nominate you to continue in the role of chairman.
I would support that.
I would support it.
I think we all do, we support it.
All right. I'll do it if you guys insist. I know, really, I don't enjoy telling people to stop talking, but anyway.
You're the man, that's right.
So do we do an all in favor? We don't have to call the roll on this one?
Or do we, wouldn't do the whole slate?
Sure. I nominate for vice chair.
Support.
You'll accept the nomination?
Sure.
All right.
But you know what happens if?
Dawn's not here.
That's right.
I'm going to look at the agendas next time before I decide. I know, I'm pretty reasonable. And I think Nancy should remain as secretary because you do a great job of calling the roll and the votes.
It's a skill set.
It is, it is a real skill set. It is, you've honed it really well.
All officers keep the same positions. There you go.
All right, anyone want to move for the slate?
So move.
All right, do we have support? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Singh to renominate the, to nominate the slate that currently exists to their positions.
Is that another roll call?
Do we have to call the vote or can we just voice vote?
Can we just voice move?
Okay, we'll go with a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Motion adjourned.
So support.
We do have one item.
Wait, there's a miscellaneous.
Sorry. On the 18th of this month, the board will likely be holding a joint meeting for those planning commissioners who are able to attend, and we'll have something out officially soon. What we're looking at are two agenda items and a board work session. The first is to get a presentation from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources on tree preservation and planting. That would help us with our tree ordinance as well as our urban forestry efforts. The second item on the agenda would be an update on some of the Cherry Hill developments. So you may see some updates on some of the developments that have been approved, as well as maybe some that may be coming forward in the future. So we'll get something out to the planning commissioners. Hopefully, we have a quorum, but it'll be a board work session nevertheless. If we can have a quorum, we'll have a joint meeting, so we'll get something out to you soon. Again, that'll be Tuesday, February 18th. We think it'll start at 6:00 p.m., but we'll get you the official word on that. So if you're able to attend, we'd love to have you there and love to have the joint meeting.
Are you, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are you getting something out in an email form?
Yes.
Okay. And is that similar to what was done with the student and the professor that came in regarding trees? Is it the same thing or different?
Similar, it'll be somebody from the state who works with a lot of communities in their urban forestry. So a lot of his daily work is helping communities, working on behalf of the state, and some things that he's presented before at conferences that he'll be presenting to Canton now that he knows that, or we've expressed interest in getting the presentation, we've seeked his advice with a lot of things that we're doing, so it'll be timely. Yes.
May I just suggest that if any individual commissioners have questions, they can ask them privately? No, I'm just kidding.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn. Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
All right. Just kidding. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm not a...